May thirteenth and hopefully not fourteenth, um, budget meeting for the City of Sisters. Roll call please.
Mayor Letts.
Here.
Council President McDougal.
Here.
Councilor Pridan.
President.
Councilor Ross.
Here.
Councilor Pellerin.
Here.
Board Member Mahoney.
Here.
Board Member Dorst.
Here.
Board Member Metolius.
Here.
Board Member Smith.
Here.
Board Member Stockinger.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item here is to elect a chair to the Budget Committee and.
I'm honored to say not chair, but let's take some nominations for the. The. Good nominee, Councilor McDougal as chairman. Okay, I have a nomination. Would anybody like a second or?
All second.
Alright, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was yours for the day. So, um, first time I didn't say thank you for everybody who put all their time into this budget. Um, there's so much that goes on behind the scenes to get it to be this good. Um, we're very lucky to have a staff here in Sisters that is super diligent and thoughtful and smart. Um, thanks to all of the volunteers and coming back volunteers for being here today and giving time in to go to. Those are really good things, but glad to be joined. Um, so, um, we're gonna get this started and start with the city managers.
Big Chair, a couple of logistical things first. You need a microphone. They are a little bit touchy, so. Hold down for like a second or two to talk. That's how they work. Sometimes we get feedback, especially if there's like devices. So, not talking, try to switch it off. We can stop feedback. And that other way, my name is sort of, I'm the city manager, also the budget officer for working state budget law. Guy who does most of the work is right here though, our finance director, Joe Neil, and he'll be doing a lot of the presentation along with his department heads to get to that section of the meeting. But one of the things that is required by state law is a budget decision. That is my role of budget officer, present to you, sort of the top line information about the budget, major things, trends. Uh, you know, big numbers, any movement on different indicators and assumptions in budget. So if you were here last year, this will be kind of similar to what I did last year where I talked about a lot of major trends, some of the financial trends and revenue expenditures, some of the assumptions we built into the budget. Then I do a lot of highlights of council goals, capital and the third project that were. So this whole year. So, big number, um, as you flip through your budget, uh, you'll, you'll notice that a whole different summary pages that are pretty handy. Uh, I think my favorite is, uh. The thirty-five, thirty-six is the citywide summary of revenue expenditures. Looks the one that looks at the two sides kind of facing them. And this is really where all the, I, I, I think the best information of the budget is, I think, for the numbers right here. You know, save all the nerd stuff and I give chase in front. This is, it gives you the high level summary on what the categories are for both revenue and expenditures. But this kind of, uh, this slide here is kind of taken from there and showing you. Budget or next to spheres would be thirty-five point two million. Uh, sounds like a big number for a town of our size. Uh, but keep in mind that this is citywide, so this handles all utilities, uh, for sewer, water, streets and their R S D C funds. Uh, and then includes all the reserves contingencies that, uh, we have in each fund to save up for major capital expenses for operations, for rainy days, uh, and other reserves. Uh, for the operating budget, so if you think about what it takes day to day to run the city, this takes out things like capital and transfers. This is, uh, just our salaries and materials, services or major contracts and. Uh, supplies and things like that, which are those is eight point five. So then on the capital side, um, six million, about five point nine million, um, pretty good, pretty good. We're, we're continuing to invest in the town. We're growing. We have healthy S D C funds still. Uh, despite some slowdown of development activity that I'll talk about, uh, later on, uh, but we have a lot of projects slated to come out, especially in water, sewer, the next couple of years, uh, that you'll see in the budget. And then, you know, ongoing street, uh, fund projects, uh, and then the working district fund also a contribution toward making a project this year that probably will come aboard. And then here's, uh, that graph that shows, uh, by fund, uh, right now, general fund is about ten million dollars. Uh, that's our major operating fund. Uh, so the general fund is what supports, uh, basically city hall, media development, uh, our public safety contract, T F T dollars come to that fund. Um, so that's our major operating fund. This chart changes year to year, uh, depending on capital we spend, especially out of utilities. So as we ramp up in our water and C C and water fund, so in the next couple of years, building the reservoir and transmission line, uh, you'll see the water funds, uh, move up this, this chart, uh, compared to some other funds. Uh, in total, we have ten, uh, funds, uh, and two in the. And so back to general fund, our major operating fund, um, you know, one thing that I'd like to see as a city manager is a healthy general fund, um, with, uh, you know, a lot of different sources of, of revenue to support our ongoing operations. As, as you're well aware, here in town, we're supported by tourism, which means transit lodging taxes, uh, coming towards general fund, which support ongoing operations like our public safety contract. Um, and then we have even additional funding, uh, through T L T to support things like its four sisters or D M O. Um, but again, ten, ten million dollars in a fund. The thing I. That, um, on the, on. Yeah, on the reserve side, another thing I'd like to see is how much fund balance we have in the general fund. So this is our major operating fund, supporting our police and administration, community development. How, you know, how will be a general fund in terms of, you know, surviving a rainy day or an economic downturn? Um, and here we have a beginning fund balance of six million dollars, which is over half of what our general fund is, um, which is a great sign. And really testament to the staff being able to budget conservatively, um, and also not take the growth and the, and the revenues that we would come into the general fund and just hiring more staff and, you know, spending that money as soon as we receive it. We've been able to build up our rainy day funds and our reserves, um, in anticipation of a future rainy day or to offset any impacts we might see from, you know, downturn in the economy or the tourism industry. Um, because we are so dependent on that transit lodging taxes, one of our major sources in the general fund. But, uh, overall, you'll see here, uh, about a quarter of, uh, the general fund, uh, goes towards police, which is. Uh, actually in, in cities that have an own police department, I would say this number is usually about fifty percent. So, um, not, not too bad. We'll get into talking about the police contract in a little bit. But in terms of how this is distributed, this is pretty typical with community development, especially in a city that does a lot of long range planning. Um, you see a lot of resources going towards that and I'll be another, um, trend I'll talk about. Um, but overall, um, you know, pretty, uh, the general fund. And then, uh, in terms of our trends with revenue expenditures, this chart's really interesting because, um, as I mentioned, we, we do a pretty good job of being disciplined in terms of how we budget. Um, we usually over, we say over, but we, we budget conservatively on our expenses. So it's assuming that, um, we'll have, you know, various needs throughout the year. Um, and, you know, costs will come in, you know, higher than what we had to pay for, you know, materials or capital. There will make sure we budget more than perhaps when bids will come in just because per state law, we have to balance a budget and we don't like having to come back to council every other month with a budget supplement or asking for more. So we do a pretty good job of, uh, being conservative on our revenue. So assuming it works in terms of growth or, uh, you know, reconstruction and then budgeting conservative on, um, our expenditures. So, for example, in personnel, we budget, um, you know, the full, uh, step increases for the full year, which, you know. Staff generally get the step, seven pieces at different times and things like that. So, um, what happens is you end up. Being able to build your beginning fund balance as working capital for the next year. So here in the current budget of, uh, this year, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We're, you know, revenue expenditures were about even, which is the balance of our budget. But if you look at the, um, after the estimated, um, of what we're gonna come in. We're gonna come in with more revenue, uh, than expenses. Um, you know, I think we are collecting more transit lodging taxes than we anticipated. Property taxes came in a little bit more and then our expenses are coming down. Um, or less budgeted. So that gives us a little more working capital going to the next year. And so I always watch this here, the, you know, in terms of how we balance, uh, revenue expenses, especially in the general fund. I'm not that concerned when we have a little gap here of about four and five hundred thousand. One, we're still building our reserves, so we're not spending our operating contingencies or, you know, not meeting our policy minimums. We're actually building our fund balance at the same time, being able to use our carryover from the, the current year to spend on, you know, a lot of the time items that are council holds and I'll talk about some of those. Patient, but, you know, we still have U T B expenses with consultants. We have park projects that we're doing. So there's a lot of one-time expenses that I think are, uh, great uses for additional surplus, as I would call it, from the, the prior year. Or they, uh, current year, uh, that we carry over and spend, especially if we're able to build or reserve at the same time. So. Um, and so here's a, a shot of how we're looking with those, those things to the states and reserves. If you go further back, the twenty-three, twenty-four, um, back to nineteen twenty, uh, this would be nineteen, uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Um, this number is more than double, um, which is again, a great position for the city to be in, especially that, you know, growth is not going to happen forever. Yes, we're gonna, you know, we're working through their growth, boundary expansion. We'll see new development expectations with that. But that's going to take time, it's gonna be a lag there. Probably have a period where slower growth is gonna hit the city for a couple of years, uh, next decade or so. Um, but we're not gonna have the catch-up because, uh, Joe and his team and, and staff have done a good job of getting us to a three-month operating contingency, which, you know, if we were bigger, uh, it's a triple A bonded, uh, city. Uh, um, you know, position to be in. And, you know, on top of that, we have the rainy day fund now at one point seven million. So this is our fund that we have built up, we have built up to. Um, basically account for our major contracts like, uh, the public safety contract, explore sisters, all right, you know, development, uh, N E P O contract. So this is on top of the operating, so we have another contingency to, um, help basically survive downturns, um, with our, uh, funding or contracts. And then we have the reserve for future expenditures. So this is on top of that, we have another couple of three months worth of, uh, reserves. Um, if there's major calamity, if we have, you know, we need to do emergency spending, there's a disaster, wildfire event, or, you know, a major economic recession. Um, we have, we have enough in the bank, um, to help us flow, uh, for at least, uh, three months. It's all together, we have one year. Uh, there's no, um, reserve and that's more than enough for a city of our size. And like I said, these are numbers you typically see with a triple A bonded rated city. So we're on a good path. And something that we want to maintain, uh, with, with future years. And then, uh, for, for our reserves for other funds, these are a little bit different because a lot of these are building up funds for spending future, right? Like we have plans for spending our capital reserves, our S D C funds, um, they're all tied into our master plan for utilities are, water now, water master plan, transportation system plan. So, uh, you know, the rates set, rates for water, you know, sewer service. And then with the, the impact fees that developers pay, um, they build the development, go into these funds and then we build up those funds to do big projects and save up enough money. Um, so these numbers will change from year to year. Um, as you can see, we're still building up like in the water S D C fund. Um, those funds that, uh, will be spent down, uh, in the next couple of years as we build those major projects. And then, uh, you know, the street fund, um, we've been doing some large projects, uh, and so those reserves have kind of been, um, being spent down except for, uh, taking quite money to the street S D C fund. We, you know, hope is that we can do more with base two within the next, uh, four or five years. And so we'll continue to build up those funds and that. Any questions apart? Trying to keep this lively as well.
Yeah, no question. But a comment that I often get is why is the operating contingency larger than should be spending, you know, I think. And I think people don't realize that tax revenue doesn't show until the month of November, earliest, but we have to operate all of July, August, September, and all of October. Many agencies that spend down have to borrow that money, then pay for the borrowing of that money in order to operate. By having a larger contingency, we're able to run the city and not run up our expenses unnecessarily. So that, yeah.
Now, so I can say that. Uh, even though we're, you know, we're doing a nice job of saving up money to spend on capital expenditures, um, you know, the staff is always very aggressive about looking for grants. Um, federal's being helping grants, you know, to fund somebody's project. So, um, you know, it's, uh, it's just, you know, that doesn't kind of show up in this process, but, you know, the project always kind of a little bit of a crash you get sometimes and sometimes we don't. Um, you know, and then I'm prepared for when we don't, um, you're completing one project, you know, next year, the, you know, trying to make grants, we dare to put in. So we're funding ourselves, but, you know, all successfully successful getting a lot of grants, not. You know, tax dollars all the time, but you gotta work on.
Yeah, that's a good point. And the one thing about, um, these, these reserves too is that some of these large projects really just, right, they have to do loans, some grants, um, other financings. And one of, one of which is that you do have a reserve. You know, help side, uh, seeing like bond reserve, you know, some need haven't shown enough, um, you know. Debt coverage basically that you can afford to pay that, that financing off with enough rate revenue, but also there's. So those are a little part that's a way to keep in mind. So sometimes you get the question, well, you got, you know, three million sitting in the water S D C fund, S D C fund, just spend that all. You won't have to, you know, raise rates. It's like, well. There's a little more technicalities to that, that we actually need to have a little bit saved up in reserves as required, you know, the, the bond holders, um, and, uh, projects are really expensive. And that's how we pay for them is through debt.
I have a question. Have you determined whether the reserves are adequate or excessive?
So that's a good question. Um, there's some best practices that the Government Finance Officers Association has for, um, that, right? Yeah, well, I guess, yeah. And yeah, that's the, the other one that provides some guidelines, right?
Oh, thirty-four, I believe is what it is.
Yeah. And so, you know, best practice is at least having like ten percent of your operations or in this case, a couple of months worth of, um, operating, uh, reserves. Uh, for us, we wanted to get into that three months, um, which is closer to what fifteen percent of, uh, our general fund operating, uh, budget. And then for our other funds, we, we target the ten percent.
In two months.
Two months. Um, and so that's kind of the rule. Um, and, and again, it's kind of tied up to that when we go to movies for, you know, get a, you know, a, a revenue bond or a full paper credit bond, we get rated. Basically, how, how financially secure is this risk to take on this debt? Um, and one of the major things that you look at is do you have strong insurance policies? And what that does is if we get rated at a triple, you know, double A or higher, you get a better rate, um, and which, you know, correlates to, you know, less fee to increase, you know, but utility rates higher than what we'd like. Um, if you got a better concern. Um, and then on top of that, a lot of these, like I said, those other reserves are for building house capital for two years and stuff for. But there is, you know, I had some, you know, just to continue on that now. Now, I talked a lot about the general fund and our reserves because one thing to keep in mind and find saying this publicly is, once we're, we're secure, feel good about, we have three months and we have a rainy day fund. We have, uh, you know, three months of contingency, three months of, uh, reserve for future expenditures. These other reserves are for other projects, you know, this will be spent with affordable housing reserve, um, as well as twenty thousand that we keep, you know, putting back in there for, for other affordable housing projects. You know, that we're building up the cap, capital replacement fund that someday will go towards a facility or some other capital. This is, you know, this is majority of this is tax money. It's property taxes, it's, you know, transit lodging taxes, it's, you know, other fees that come into the general fund. And we want to put this towards, you know, big uses. This is, you know, anything that comes in that's over and above what our minimums are is something for the budget committee council will consider as a resource for arts or, you know. Looking at expanding the U T B for other, you know, all the applied projects like dark sky implementation and things like that, because, you know, we need to reinvest capital to our city. Uh, there is a point where it's like enough is enough. We have enough in our reserves to, to feel good and secure and have a high bond rating. So, um, again, kudos to staff. We're, we're getting that in place so we can invest in our town, um, with, with the growth money. So financial trends, uh, here we can talk a little bit more about, um, some of the, the movement, big picture stuff. You know, top line population, interesting, gone down, uh, per the census. That's disputable. We'll see, uh, how big numbers come in, uh, in the fall, but, um, especially with big projects like Sunset Meadows coming online where people will be in the. So things like that. But, um, basically, P S U recognized, uh, that, um, they had overestimated statewide the population and so it kind of affected every community. Um, more so in the valley and the metro area than, uh, other places, but I think the city of Redmond had a huge change and there was a lot of it shouldn't. Very happy about that because this number does, uh, correlate with, uh, how much we get the state's our revenue after that. So that's where we stand. Um, you know, otherwise, you know, touching on these numbers, a lot of them helpful in terms of what our estimates are and, and especially talking about affordable housing and ability to afford homes here and sisters. Home ice cream to home. Seven thousand, uh, that number changes month to month, depending on what properties are being sold and where. Largest employers are still primarily public, um, the school district and forest service. Pretty typical to see a school district as a one floor. I mean, it's, um, uh, but, uh, sisters coffee and we have a bunch of other service, um, you know, employers here, as well as other, uh, industrial uses that are coming, even more coming online, um, uh, in our industrial areas, which is great to see. Um, thanks to, you know, his team, which is basically him, working with companies like Basis to expand here for more jobs in Sisters. One thing to talk about with, with just the overall economic trends, it is hard to predict. I was almost, when I first started writing the budget message, uh, it was during, uh, you know, April first and around that time. I'm like, I'm not really sure what to write about in terms of the future of, you know, what our economy might look like, especially with tourism, um, you know, some of the, you know, the tariffs on and off and things like that. I'm like, it, it's really hard to predict how those things get laid out here. Um, I can't say, you know, Paul, uh, the Jackson, it hasn't affected how we try to think about projects. As we've been seeing some bits come in with tariffs attached to our pricing. So some of that stuff is hard to predict, but then, you know. Couple of months later, some tariffs come off. So it's really hard to predict. From here, really hard to write about that, uh, projecting how, how things are gonna look, you know, for the next year, um, but we're not, it's just a year yet. So, um, overall, it's hard to kind of project out where we'll see the economy go in Sisters. I think one thing that we'll continue to watch, which trends have been okay so far is tourism. Um, and how many folks are going to be coming, um, instead of discretionary dollars on vacations. This has been, we've been trending in the right direction and holding steady with people taking local trips to places like Sisters, certain other recreation, other experiences, I think, yeah, from, uh, you know, deep white towns have a lot of offer, like to soon. Uh, so revenue, this is all gonna be pretty good news. Uh, property taxes continue to grow. This is all based upon, uh, development, resiliency in our city permits. Uh, I mentioned Sunset Meadows to grow, um, coming now on. Some of those aren't even on the tax rolls yet, so this growth will continue. Um, and so it's, uh, projects now get assessed in front of the tax rules, um, and then the woodlands as well. Uh, so we're still seeing almost seven percent annual growth, which most cities, um, are, you know, to have that, uh, experience. You know, it's probably where our taxes are based upon assessed values, which in Oregon, as long as your market values are higher than assessed value, which has been the case for many, many years now, uh, they grow by three percent. Here we have so much additional growth and investment in build development going that, uh, we're getting a potential for that. So, um, which again, a lot of us to. Invest in our town, also build up our reserves. Uh, so property taxes, uh, I always like to show this snapshot just because, um, we are just one little piece, uh, of your property tax bill. Um, you know, about, uh, you know, six, seven hundred dollars, five hundred dollars actually just comes to the City of Sisters, whatever the people have saw on the tax bill. It's not increase your taxes, it just says all the division of taxes and so all these other numbers go down to supply a tax rate for the original. But the average assessed value for a home in Sisters is about two hundred thousand dollars. Um, so the average homeowner would pay about five hundred dollars a year for, uh, city services. This is not utilities, which are utilities that pay for through your rates, um, but this is for, you know, public safety or administration, for community development, for planning. Um, and so not a bad deal. Um, and, uh, well, you know, having a permanent tax rate of two point six is actually pretty great for a city of our size that, uh, has other special districts like the Parks Integration District and Fire District. So I think that's almost, pretty close to a band pass, you know, they have police and fire. So, um, that has set us up for success as well. And, you know, that was really just, uh, like a good route, but they're due to go, but it was happening to establish a permanent tax rate at that level. Uh, another, um, graph that kind of illustrates, um, you know, the situation for us is, um, that real market value. So what a property sell for, uh, uh, on the market. Uh, citywide is well above what assessed values are. So assessed values sort of base, you know, the taxes on, um, real markets, what I'm going to be sold for. Those got to be a couple of years ago. Again, as long as it's kind of real markets above assessed value, assessed values will go up by three percent. Um, but city as a whole is experiencing more than that because of the development. More trends here, lodging tax, um, you know, last year we were sort of seeing a little bit of a dip that actually came in a little bit over budget, um, which was a good sign. Uh, we actually saw, probably because of the weather gods, um, we lucked out, uh, or maybe not luck, but just, uh, people were working on it here in shoulder months, uh, for sea season. Saw an uptick in tax collections during the shoulder seasons, uh, this winter. Um, and so it's holding steady. Uh, we might have reached a plateau just in terms of occupancy with, you know, generally, um, you know, what we have here in town in terms of the number of lodging facilities and things like that. But our campground continues to be very popular. It's pretty full right now. Um, and so that revenue has come in, um, uh, pretty decent for the city to, to invest in our part and instead of maintenance. So, uh, you know, it's a good, it's okay to see this holding steady. Um, you know, if we had another motel or two come in, we'll probably see that go up. But, um, overall, uh, better, better, better look at this than, uh, last year. Franchise fees go into the street fund, but I, this is a general revenue could be spent on general government. Uh, franchise fees are the fees that utilities pay to use our right away. So, uh, we're talking about the power company, we're talking about, uh, gas, uh, where we have cable, our garbage internet. Um, and then our own utilities as well, uh, water, sewer, uh, pay, uh, into the, uh, into the street fund for the use of the right way. And so this jet number generally goes up as population does because it's based on, um, you know, basically how many. How's revenues, gross revenues, uh, how many customers they have. And so it's either five or seven percent of, um, your garbage bill, seven percent of your garbage bill, there's a fee on there for, um, paying for franchise fee. Um, so this is a, we, we, because we have the transit lodging tax here in town, it goes into our general fund. We're able to put franchise fees directly to our street fund, which supports street projects, pavement, maintenance and things like that. Most cities are not in a position, in fact, usually there's a tug of war between the public works director and the city manager on where franchise fees go. Um, because it is one of the few sources that could be spent on anything like property taxes here. Long term, you know, this is in, always been in my back pocket that if we needed to supplement, you know, general fund revenue is a. long term, you know, this is in, always been in my back pocket that if we needed to supplement, you know, general fund revenue to some franchise fees, it's something that we will look at. Uh how bad a cost that came to me, uh management and things like that, but it is a flexible discretionary resource. Uh also in the street fund, we have the state local gas taxes. Um I always like showing this chart just because uh shows the difference between for state gas tax revenues and how we kind of now that uh all the tax increases from two thousand seventeen, hospital two thousand seventeen, which increased the statewide gas taxes, so you know, support major projects um in the state, but also give cities more funding has now crested. Um and we're seeing the impacts of, you know, for fuel efficiency. Electric vehicles, obviously. And so uh we're starting to see that top off. Um and then the city gas prices have been slowly declining for the same reasons. Like even with more tours and things like that, you see a lot more Teslas, you see a lot more electric vehicles. Every car has gotten more fuel efficient. Um and so we're in the works right now is a uh the state is working on a transportation uh package. I probably read that, read about that in a paper that would translate into more revenue for the city. Uh you know, all the details are still being worked out. There is a proposal on the table, but there is not a bill yet that's been introduced or appearing on that. But if that concept has become available, we would see um a large majority of that increased revenue go go towards cities, but also just generally maintenance and operations for our town. Um you know, so we benefit from that as well because we had a lot of the considerations of that. Their own pair of bushes under them. Another one that's really interesting to watch, and if you remember this graph from last year, our budget is actually about half of what we're projecting because again, this economic climate is very hard to predict for interest rates. Um I think when we were budgeting last year, you know, the Fed was anticipating dropping uh rates and you know, a number of times in the next year that is not materializing. And so we're continuing to see interest rates higher uh historically than what they have been. And because if you go back to that chart of all our reserves and we have our S D C funds and utility funds, that that money that are in those reserves are actually in our investment account, the state that is getting what what's it percent right now? Four point six, four point six. So this is all I would say cream on the top um of the, you know, those reserves that we're collecting and first on right now. Not going to have that forever. Interest rates eventually will start to come down a little bit. And also we're going to be spending, you know, those reserves. And so we won't have as much of a uh a balance to build uh that interest uh on and get that initial revenue. But great for those funds to be able to build more capital um to to fund projects in the future. And also the general fund is collecting some of that interest revenue as well. And we have, you know, our liability server invested in that. Well, government investment. So um nice to be able to, you know, collect this right now, build our reserves and kind of use it on our time sources, but we're not making that for. Um and again, we've budgeted for that to kind of come down as we're spending down, you know, uh some of those projects or reserve projects also just made it something that just the rates come down as they slowly did right in the last year. Another trend I'm watching here is uh development revenue. Um you know, general fund support that goes to the community development department. This is another one, listening is very hard to predict. Um you know, usually we look at pre-acts. You know, any kind of initial inquiries from developers in terms of, you know, what we can anticipate to see land use activity name. But keep in mind, we've, you know, don't have a lot of land left in city limits to develop. Uh we've got a couple of big parcels, but not a lot of movement going on in those. Um and so, you know, community developer revenue is probably the land use fees that come in. We do not do building permitting, right? That's a uh pass through uh that goes uh to the Chutes County. And so they do all the permits and inspections for once projects become, you know, built or proposed to be built, uh new permit, um but this is on the land side. And so, you know, historically subdivisions, you know, developments bring in a lot of, you know, revenue because there's a lot of work that goes in this. Um and so again, it's kind of hard to predict that. Um you know, in terms of what it might look like in a year, um uh in my development, especially if we have not a lot of it though. Um and get built. So the general fund um support continues to kind of grow for that department. But it is another kind of graph that changes year to year with the budget. Um you know, general fund support now around second million dollars, but all it takes is a couple of good projects to come in. Um and that's, I materialized a little bit this year where we were anticipating for uh general fund support of the development. Yeah. Uh actually collected a little more in case uh ready, we'll make this maybe. I was switching over to some trends in expenditures. Um it's one of the assumptions that we always watch and keep an eye on. Um graph, this scary graph is now looking a lot better. And actually today, uh inflation numbers were um pretty good. Uh based on why we use the C P I U for uh the west coast. Um and I think uh today it was at two point three. So we're we're hovering now around that two percent um you know, target that that had in terms of inflation. There's a lot of copy adds to that, of course, reading the paper and stuff that, you know, um that we might see that churn here the next couple of months if parents do produce more inflation, but uh the numbers already involved were were again, like pretty good historically compared to what we're seeing. Yeah. Uh after uh before the pandemic. Um but why we watch this is uh, you know, these things affect our contracts, they affect our uh materials when we buy things, obviously. Um you know, affects uh some of the construction contracts and stuff that we have to go out there for. So um keep an eye on inflation numbers. We also watched the construction cost index, which has leveled off uh since some big jumps uh during COVID, uh which is a good sign. We've actually seen this kind of materialize in some of the bits that we've had recently in the last year, uh where bits have come have come in uh at or level low or engineers estimate, which is a good sign that one, things are competitive. Um I guess uh two, it's good for rate pairs. The bad side may be that things are slowing. Um you know, so in terms of just the overall economy, um I guess like there's less jobs and for to keep uh uh teams rolling or construction side. Uh personal services, uh no new physician proposed in the budget. Uh but it is a major driver for our budget. Um you know, it's a large operating cost, not not as big as our regional services, just because we have such large contracts, but with twenty staff. Um you know, uh personal services is a big portion of our operating budget. So anytime you have a thirty percent increase across the board of first, it's going to impact us. And so that was what a hundred and thirty thousand? Yeah. Yeah. So the first contribution rates come out every two years based upon uh the prior for two years investment uh results. Uh and so you know, kind of hold our breath every couple of years, but we're continuing to pay, you know, all cities, all counties, all the state, everybody that's a public employer in Oregon pays uh their first contribution. Very conscious, complicated calculations that go into that and um make sure there's a counter back and and uh for this with the details, but the the bottom line is that uh we were given our um contribution rates and uh we did go up by fifty percent, which is an impact uh of a hundred and thirty thousand. Health insurance premiums, pretty typical to see those go up year over year, so nine percent this year. We also budgeted, as mentioned before, stepping pieces, which are three percent. The steps we have each fifteen. Um so if you're not at the top step and you uh have a satisfactory um uh performance review or uh stepping pieces are budgeted. And then we have uh a core of two point four, which takes the social security number, right? Um and and the C P I, we average those and we base the C P I what we saw when we were developing the budget. Billings one, yes, February. Yeah. Uh and so again, mentioned that we're holding steady uh at twenty point five F T E. We have a small town with, you know, the, you know, the resources that we have, we have to be very mindful of adding staff and where we add it. Um that's something that uh our Neds and I get together every year, talk about what our needs are. We definitely have needs, um but we also have to keep in mind, can we support you know, ongoing uh impact of the general fund or any fund for that matter of adding staff. That's not at one time, it's sense, that's an ongoing expense. Um and a full, full in F T nowadays is what's the average? Oh, probably ninety, ninety, fully loaded? Yeah, I mean, good benefits, yeah, first, yeah. So yeah, a hundred dollars or so and our chart has not changed. Um you know, keeping intact, we're going to have it currently. Uh so this is those twenty point five illustrated us uh stationally, uh still contracting for obviously just county, which uh I'll talk about here in just a second. Um one thing that we budgeted last year, and this was part of the presentation, was a capital projects manager, um because of the timing on some of the projects and and how we're funding those projects. Um uh that that move is out to be made July one of this uh proposed fiscal year. So uh Paul Stern is still public works director. Um and so that that change is going to be happening um July one, uh where Jackson will be sliding as the operations manager uh for public works and then all the advantage with capital projects. And you'll see as you grow the budget, um you know, we're really already ramping up on design uh of major portions of those projects. Um and there's a couple others are slated that uh um you know, Paul decided to focus all his energy on on managing the project. Okay, here's the big one. Um this is our police services contract with the Chutes County. Um see the big jump here. Uh this was anticipated. We talked about it a little bit last year. We've been talking to Chutes County for a couple of years now about um the contract like to end rolling forward on the new five year contract, talking about adding the additional patrol deputy. Um you can see this is maintaining the existing staff and structure. Um so keeping three deputies and a lieutenant um as our our staff uh that are assigned to sisters. Um and we're going from, you know, about eight hundred or about one to uh one point one uh for the contract. It's a big jump. It's a big impact to the general fund especially, uh something that we anticipated and had built in a reserve for uh last year, knowing that um we had seen some quarter range numbers and and where the cost per officer now are. That the major driver on this is, you know, with all that inflation that happened during COVID, these units were negotiating contract during that time. And we saw some big salary adjustments happening uh possibly in central Oregon has really escalated. Uh public employers have had to adjust to become competitive wages that includes Chutes County and their sheriff's office, other, you know, heated departments across central Oregon, federal state. So we were basically benefiting off of the old contract with escalation of four four percent per year. Yeah, percent per year. Um and so we've kind of come to the point where uh it's caught up with us. Uh it's a hospice officer and hospice lieutenant's time has really escalated. Um and so that was a part of negotiations, just looking at those numbers, seeing the justifications behind them, understanding that they're, you know, restricted to what their contracts are for when they need to pay their officers. Um and they need to fulfill their costs and um you know, basically like the the revenue that they need and support, not being able to justify the contract. Uh this number is actually really close to what if you take the assessed value of sisters and you apply what most people in the county have to pay for for enhanced sheriffs and services is pretty close to what um that number would be. Um so they're not there good. Um perhaps you get a pretty good deal if you think about um what we had before, for paying the taxes for Chutes County share shared services and then what we get out of three deputies assigned just to sister city movements and um the majority of lieutenant's time assigned system. So this is again, just three officers and lieutenant. We do have numbers for the fourth deputy. We're going to continue to watch that because it's another, you know, two hundred thousand dollars um to to add that fourth deputy and you saw the general fund, you saw that number of the revenue and expenses. Like to see that close the gap on that before we can really say we can have this as an outflowing impact to our general fund. Um but this is a, you know, a order of general fund now is that uh.
I'd like to speak on that from a historical perspective. Um twenty eighteen is when we negotiated the first contract, which changes from one west district deputy, four hours a day, maybe, um which was about six hundred thousand dollars to uh the current setup that we have now, which is so we can be deputies. Um it's been a bargain so far, to be honest, and you you kind of said what we need compared to countywide, how much it costs per capita for each uh that kind of that same kind of coverage. So um I think you said it perfectly. We said it caught up to us. That's kind of what it is. Uh we actually were getting a bargain at the very beginning of the of uh having the coverage that we have now and raising three percent per year was honestly, still some of the bargain. It wasn't perfect, but um I think now with the swell of staff, I think it's uh easy to see that we're finally going to pay, but we're we're actually giving uh instead of a bargain. So.
Thanks. Yeah, we have a running numbers here, folks.
I I would now just say, you know, just a minute on standing for our own police department.
I was gonna say, as everyone has the numbers on that a while, um I just from a staffing level, um I mean, if you at least this plus, you have to keep in mind, we have to purchase a facility, police cars, so the upfront numbers will be really high. Then you add insurance, equipment, uh pretty neat training. Probably more than three deputies because you you need their hire to have a complication or something like that. So um and we're going to get a deal with the lieutenant. So we only pay two thirds of the lieutenant. We don't have to pay a full police chief, which we would have to if we had our own police department as well, right? We actually also did, you know. All right, we back in the math, it's it's probably two, three apps, I'm sure, without the end service. And that that's people, that's about melted. It's working down. That was one question I wanted to clarify. Okay, I'm going to touch on some council goals here um and some other budget highlights. Uh thank you very much. So we got a couple of projects here and wildfire mitigation. So one of the things that we're, we've started work here with a grant and continue, we're starting to design on, yes, we need to design it, um is the defensible space demonstration landscape here at City Hall. Um so council is, council has been working on our de- defensible space regulations for wildfire dissonancy. Um and the council has a, has a goal to, you know, kind of uh walk the top, right? We're going to yeah, stage involvement to do this, potentially this thing developed to take on defensible spaces, but show people what that means. So creating a landscape here that actually can be an educational thing, you know, placards of signs about, you know, plant species, distances away from buildings and things like that. So we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars to implement that landscape here. Uh the by benefit would be water conservation. Um so demonstrating how to conserve water in the high desert, uh with landscaping. Um and it'll be just a nicer park experience, I think, too, for the same, rather than to have uh you know, pathways, things like that. Um that does plant statements, education stuff. Uh and then we're also just every, like every year, we're we're budgeting for continued wildfire mitigation of city properties, um twenty thousand is sort of fun, uh at the lazy sea. Um and uh so on, so continue other thing working and uh we get support there. Housing and building growth. So this is mostly in community development. So again, um when we saw that number of like how much the general fund is supporting community development, a lot of that is because we, you know, that that department does a lot of the things that cash all that don't have revenue recovery, right? U T B amendment. Um it's really an investment in the future, right? This is where our town, a couple of managed growth, where it's the best place to place that, right? Um but there's, you know, besides a hundred thousand dollars grant that we received last year, um there's still costs associated with that uh project. So we have a hundred thousand to bring next fiscal year. Uh affordable housing grants, uh which will come out of that uh affordable housing reserve. Um we had budgets in the current year. These things take time executing agreements. So it's a lot of required to make sure that that money is spent the right way. So there or deeds and have distinct covenants that all these happen before we write a check. Um and so that's going to be carried over. So some here. Development code updates. Uh the council has a uh a goal to look at our design standards, um variability in design, um especially anticipating, you know, the future growth, developments. And so um we're seeing someone come to help us with that, the ball cover or overall this will go. And all this data in places that so having some business help us uh write that code would be helpful. Then we also put in some uh center program money um as a pilot program to help people implement dark skies. Um the idea here um kind of concept would be like a rebate program to City Hall and sort of receive that you bought a dark second flight light, sold it and get a rebate for that. Um you kind of further develop that program and get it from council, but we wanted to put some dollars in there um to kind of ramp up and and to kick that off next year. Then we're also working on the northwest part. Uh that project has started. It's uh Uh, that project has started. It's. The northwest part is the the parkland that's around about in Parkway. And in twenty, at the Woodlands development. And so we're capable of consulting. Uh, this is partially funded also through a grant. I hope it will master brand on what that market is going to look like. All right, infrastructure, a lot going on in water. This, this is just the tip of the iceberg and spending on water projects. We've already started some of this work, but we'll continue on with the well one, one, well, two improvements. The design for the new two point two million gallon reservoir. Will be in the next fiscal year. So we're designing with the construction now to be dollars. Same with education transmission made so that we will mainline coming down off the new reservoir could be done and see. Asset is also going to be in the design. Sewer, the rope street pump station. Will be will be. Uh, next fiscal year, we also have the west side pump station, which is a new pump station on the west side, right up by the Woodlands development on Elm Street. That's a major project, two point one million budget out sewer and coming out of green horse ball because it does have sewer capacity for the downtown in commercial, high water commercial development area. That's going to be a a large project with the the home station and then for horse main going down El Jefferson. To the the sewer plan. And then we're starting lazy sea face one design. Been waiting for this. This one's exciting to me because it's not just about folks and sewage underground, but creating wetlands and recreational these with. Sustainable treatment of wastewater. And so starting that design for that conditioning, that property and helping treat wastewater, but also be a recreational remedy. And then streets and transportation, a couple of projects that are carrying forward. We've started the Elm Street pathway with design tree removal. This took environmental work permitting this process why choose street. So this is the pathway that goes Bill training to the abuse Peterson Ridge Trailhead. So safe way to bike and and walk and run from town. D R T. And that's three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Can't hold no place pathways also continuing in the next fiscal year. And then we have the EV charters. That we have a grant that is supporting this, but that's at the gateway department. Which by the way, yeah, I have a picture, right? Maybe I had a picture. There was one already. Yeah, yeah, that looks great. Okay, other capital projects. So North Locust Corps of Safety improvements right here with our new roundabout and the. Community center being over here now with S P R D, city hall, library, a lot of activity now as part of town. And so we're we're looking at doing some safety improvements, sidewalks, crossings. Safe crossings along Locust that would be funded hopefully through an O dot grant, but we have budgeted the expenses in the street fund of twenty five thousand dollars for that project. Adams Avenue, which will be a big topic in her renewal. We get to that is. Slated for using our parking district fund. So when a development occurs in our downtown parking district, they pay into that fund. Yeah. We've been building up those funds for a project like Adams because what Adams will do will add a lot more parking in her downtown. So Adams Avenue street skate will be very similar to what you see around Maine, Maine good. Uh, with parking, with, you know, improvements on the side streets, sidewalks, street drains and things like that. And so I think that's a good use of that parking district. That's going to offset the costs there. Then we have some other park projects too that we budgeted, you know, doing some landscape improvements here that I. Avenue Island landscape. And then with the gateway park, the park board has been helping, you know, work through other improvements to that property now that we have mobility hub. Bill is putting some fencing around elaborate. And then Gateway Park, Dog Park will have some fencing as well and keep that off each area. That's all. And then the Bill Bill training, we have some media improvements. We want to do them with the sidewalk. To the. The area of that shelter. And then I gotta mention that we have thirty thousand still budget for many grams. Last year we increased that by five thousand dollars, what about ten thousand? Yeah. And fully allocated that out. And so the relative hand there. So we maintain that at thirty thousand. We've also budgeted fifteen thousand for civic leadership programs. We're working with P S U and C four C or what that might look like for the next year, but. So right in the middle of our second civic leadership academy. And it's again working very well, creating waves, granted. Yeah, it's a great program. We want to see something like that continue. So we budgeted some funds in the council manager department for that. And then we put in some dollars for signage master plan. Four sisters has completed their breaking and we've been working with them on kind of formulated an idea to work together on what it would look like to update refining signage. City bonding that size, gateway designs, welcome signs, silly signs, citywide and have kind of an assistant theme town. And one way you kind of do that is do a master plan that gets you the schematics. And you know, you do some public involvement, work with council and staff and. And come up with a kind of a playbook of okay, this kind of sign, this is what it's going to look like. And then we'll go and get those fabricated. I'm kind of looking forward to this. It's one of those like nice, you know, things that updates your town and all the black things for all our parks signage, wayfinding signage on this consistent updated. Okay, any questions? That's the budget message. Almost an hour. Okay. Thank you for not be. Yeah, I thought I was gonna joke. I was like, okay.
That's impressive. First thing, another topic about every step of the way, I think you're obviously not reading. All the knowledge they, so thank you for that. And thank you for. Sharing all the details, I think, for people who aren't here, you know, all the time. And also anybody who. You know, probably watching this video years from now, let me say, uh, anything he's doing and we don't forget that if you, and I can think of the messages so. Not to see them who are here today.
Thank you. Well, I mean, kind of the staff, right? Just deliver the message. Thanks so much.
He followed along well, obviously.
Crazy part is he's like that every day.
I know. Yeah. So we're getting ready to move into the department in front of presentations. Let's go ahead and get started, but I thought there was a break in like half an hour or so when the right, when the timing is right, it was kind of, you have to run, you know. No, no offense taken. Um, and this is a serious meeting, but also casual. So please ask questions, jump in, this is about learning. Then you all may have to go down this and then all for who are getting ready for that. And I'm not sure that we're. So, but we're going firstly, we'll pop a comment if there is any. We're back to see your help with that.
Uh, I can't. Let's see.
Almost always this.
I see none.
Well, I was gonna turn it to Joe first and. So my instructor usually goes over a little bit more of kind of the revenue extension trend. If you talk about, there's a great section in the beginning of the book. You know, that kind of goes into all the sort of trends and financial.
Some of those porn charts and.
Yeah, yeah. And then what we've kind of focused on once we get into the part of the patients, just going through the budget book, page to page. I know. And we feel like slugging sometimes, but it's kind of easy to follow along.
Yeah, we don't get lost.
Yeah, very.
Yeah, so with that.
Joe, can you turn on your microphone?
Oh, yes, sir. Um, yeah, so I mean, thanks for, he did such a good job covering a lot of the paid revenue sources. I'm going to touch on some of the details of them again and go through some of the major expenses. Uh, that the city has and then you'll kind of see some of those themes throughout the department presentations. Um, and then so we'll kind of touch on those again, just kind of reiterate some of those, some of those notions. But the first thing that like Jordan talked about, so when we touched base with the county assessor, Scott Langton. Uh, going to the budget process, he kind of gives us a snapshot of where we're at now, where we expect to grow in terms of assessed value. So. Uh, he thought that would be about six and a half percent. And so that's what we've integrated into this budget. And again, that's a combination of that three percent increase in assessed value maximum that you have in addition to develop. So. Again, another really strong, you know, increase in assessed value and that really accounts for a lot of the kind of the general fund index increases for. You know, personnel, for materials and projects, things like that. So another, you saw that chart, I mean, you know, within fifteen years or or so, it's it's doubled. It was like an eight hundred thousand. You know, just like that. It was that long ago, you're almost sitting a million. So, you know, that that's just a great attribute that we have in terms of popularity of our city. Um, you know, the second, so again, I'm still on page twenty three. Actually, I'll share my screen like. And that's bookmarked too. So the second major revenue source that Jordan also touched on was changed room tax. As you see in the chart here, you know, the effects of COVID. And so that dropped down quite a bit in nineteen twenty, but it's 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 increased dramatically since then. It has leveled out also to Jordan's point, you know, at some at some level work at maximum capacity and anything that we have in those shoulder seasons really attributes to an increase. In lodging taxes, kind of icing up cake for the well. So we expect everything else being equal, this to kind of level off and and even fluctuate from time to time based on different winters. I mean, even in summers, if we have smoke events, things of that nature, that might affect lodging taxes and it hasn't passed. You know, it has leveled out overall, but it's still something to make sure we consider it. It can be such a volatile revenue stream. And for a volatile revenue stream to be such a big component of our revenue is something that we need to consider, especially with the with the reserves. Um, you know, and I've said this in probably the last several budget meetings, but just even going back to other touristy towns in our. In our state during COVID, they really were struggling for ways to make up some of this gap in financing because they relied so heavily on that lodging tax. Does not plan a lot of their their needs in the general fund. So. We're always trying to be very mindful of that. That's why we have a lot of those screening day fund reserves. On the things that nature is to make sure that all these bigger contracts that we have, it doesn't matter what our lodging taxes for the year, we need to make sure we pay those service contracts. Does anybody have any questions on either one of those things? Okay, so moving down here, Jordan.
But I wanted to give a notice to. Previous councils as well as to this council and and staff. To to realize that this is the wallet of the stream fund. And in my profession, the work with the map always should ever fund people and programs with. Soft money, grants, money that could go away. And that's the same thing here, is that using strategic ways that we can backfill, we have to rather than make making it really the brunt. Of our economy. Funding, that is important. So it's a nice revenue stream to have. I wouldn't want it to go away, but at the same point in time, we are dependent on always being in high.
Thank you. Um, so moving on here, we just some other he is planning inspection. These George touched on these. We expect these to remain relatively steady, especially with just the the development, maybe a slight decrease over the last year. And business license fees, we we think those will be fairly constant. Um, compared to last year, park user fees be initiated a five dollar per night additional fee for parks. And the parks, that's at the campground here, we said campground. And that is for that to be quite the remedy for us. It almost gets to the point where we're subsidizing our whole parks department with the activation. Of of that campground, which is which is great. And that was kind of going back years, Paul's goal and my goal to to make that happen. So. You know, it's still a very reasonable rate that we have. The max is sixty. They can get a micro micro spot for ten dollars if you stay there for a couple of minutes. So it kind of. Brings the whole spectrum of of campers there, which is awesome. We're really proud of that. And, you know, Julie here at City Hall does a great job managing that. We've got some camp posts in place that do a great job. So again, just a tremendous community amenity that we have, which we have more in a lot of ways. Um, and so you'll see that increase to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And again, that's general fund dollars. Um, moving on to state trip revenues. So Jordan also touched on that. Those are things that. That the city gets, the state collects, you know, liquor tax, cigarette tax. And state highway tax and they allocate that typically that's allocated on a per capita basis. So as you can tell, last year, we had a higher per capita. Uh, or higher population than we did this year. So we're getting a little bit less. And then I also added that narrative, there's a little bit of logistics issues that O L C C is dealing with. Uh, they're building a huge new warehouse, having a lot of trouble with that. So unfortunately, the cities are are taking the impact of that negatively. So we've seen that that decrease this year. Hopefully that's fixed. In the next couple of years, and we'll see it go kind of go back to the regular distribution rates, but as now it sits down a little bit and. Uh, who else is doing like cigarette tax, which is not very big in terms of it is also decreasing as it has for the last fifteen years. Not a bad thing. Yeah. And also, so a street fund, I want to talk about the local gas next a little bit. Here, here on page twenty four. And as as Jordan also spoke about, that's one of those things that that has also seen a little bit of a decrease and, you know, it's it's hard to pinpoint exactly what it is. Um, our guess is that it's a multitude of things from, you know, more fuel efficient vehicles, alternative fuel controls. You know, in in the most of the times, we just had a lot more trips coming through town. Maybe that's why gas prices, you know, could be another reason why if. Gas prices are perceived to be higher here, maybe people forego, you know, stopping here to go somewhere else. Not sure. Um, but what we do know is it is decreasing a little bit, about four percent, I believe, year over year. Um, and so we we probably expect that to to continue that trend. Now, one of the other things that Jordan talked about that's great about our street fund, which is where the local gas tax goes into, is we have. All these franchise fees that that probably go into that fund. So we're not. Relying just on that local gas tax to fund a lot of our our street projects and materials and services and personnel. So that's a that's a great attribute to have there. So kind of just, we're always going to keep an eye on that. You know, it's, I think, you know, statewide, that's something that the state's talking about, other cities that have local gas taxes are talking about. Just because it's such an integral part of their infrastructure needs. Sorry. Oh, you're fine. And so again, yeah, franchise fees, if you look at the street fund as we go through that, you can see how they've really moved that fund and have allowed us to. You know, it used to be that the the local gas tax was the sole, kind of the sole income item for. To allow us to do road maintenance, ceiling, things like that or overlays. And now. You know, it it's, we have so much more more to do with that in terms of funding because we have our increase in franchise fees. So. A lot of positive.
Question, um. You know, um, talking prior during the negotiation from the case in package of the state. Is that we currently there's that fifty thirty twenty. Break of a of how. Fancies get money from transportation workers, fifty percent goes to the state, thirty percent to townies, twenty percent to the cities. Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah.
So how do you see that twenty percent? Is that just, is it just this gas tax or does it show up another?
So that that will also show up in the city who has revenue sharing in the street fund as well. From the state.
Right, put gas, state gas.
For the state tax. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah.
I was wondering, like that makes sense. Yeah, I was just wondering if it showed anywhere else. It was, that's just the really doing the place they see in the.
Yeah, that's that's the only question I've got over here. Yeah. Um, and then Jordan also touched on this part in district. So a parking district. Um, is basically a five cent per cubic foot fee that is incurred by the business owners and the downtown core. And that goes to parking improvements in the downtown core. And I've been here almost ten years and we haven't used that yet. And finally we get the opportunity to do that. So we're pretty excited to. We'll share that fund later on, but that's going to be a really neat contribution. They have a new street skate project. So you'll see that coming up here. And usually the income for that's about fifteen thousand dollars per year. Um, we did a few deferral programs kind of during the COVID times. So that. That kind of skewed the timing of the income, but if you look at. That kind of skewed the timing of the income, but if you look at it on average, it's about fifteen thousand dollars a year. And then system development charges, um those are. Charges paid by uh usually by developers when they're constructing a house, they combined to be about nineteen thousand dollars per dwelling unit. Um, and it it's one of the more difficult things honestly to to really uh estimate, uh we've. Kind of been all over the place uh with our estimations of it, just mainly because of the the development here in town. And and commercial businesses tend to pay a lot more in system development charges because of their impact to the system and residents do, so that can also kind of skew that. Then um, and so you'll see this as a as a continual theme for the system development charge funds, just as development starts to. You'll see that uh that revenue projection dwindle as well. You know, the the one other attribute about that is it's not as concerning, I guess, holistically, because a lot of these system development charge funds have it. About really healthy fund balance, so missing the mark by. Maybe twenty thousand dollars per fund is not going to really impact our ability to do any projects. That will just, that will just add to, you know, whatever the fund balance will be here, our ability to debt service. Uh, if we decide to go out and do that, uh in order to do some of these projects. That's what I kind of have for the major revenue sources, um and again, we'll probably touch on some of those as we go through the. Other funds, but um those are kind of the the highlights of what we have. Uh, let's see, looking down a little bit further here, took is kind of a summary of S T Cs, which is which is helpful to kind of see a snapshot of um kind of those combined. Because they are kind of scattered through the the city funds and. I guess lastly, um you know, for the water and sewer fund. You know, we've talked a lot about these capital projects, the water and sewer fund are also going to be contributing to those projects, so we had a. A large comprehensive financial study of of those contributions and had a. Kind of account for our those utilities to contribute to the to the plans and to the expenditures and um and so the. The consultant that we had came up with kind of a a price increase for a lot of the utilities, we had a twelve percent increase for water, last year, we're going to continue to do that this year. And that's going to be constant for four years, I believe, and then that will taper back down. And then the sewer fund has an increase of four percent. And and so you kind of see those also as we go through those funds, um. Now, I will say one of the things, you know, even though twelve percent is significant, um to the water fund, the advantage of the way we apply that increase is. It's not just for the the flat rate that you pay, it's also for the volume rate, so you're paying per hundred cubic feet. And so if you don't use a lot of water, then you're probably not going to see that large of an increase as opposed to, you know, if you use more water, so. Um, it's kind of, you know, pay as you use, um. Set up which we decided to do uh several years ago, just to make it a little bit more equitable across that fund. Okay. Want to want to keep Chris through major expenditures? Breaks, anybody here, good? Okay. Okay, so as Jordan talked about, we're projecting to keep our staffing levels the same at twenty F T. Um, and then, you know, with with the twenty F T, we have our cost living adjustments, we call them colas. We have that plus for two point four percent. Um, and again, that is the combination of the social security administration cola. Uh, which comes out in January, I think of every year, and then the um the local consumer price index, and and that's typical of a lot of other districts. Empire District uses the same methodology, a lot of other districts. Um, and we've also incorporated three percent merit adjustment into our personal services budgets. Um, you know, to count for uh some of the benefit of uh of a positive performance evaluation. Uh, healthcare benefits, uh we get that notification from our our insurance carrier, uh C D County Insurance, and they're projecting a nine percent increase. You know, for a lot of the same reasons as probably everyone else is experiencing this increase in healthcare costs uh across the board, they try to get a better value. Um, because our insurance is a pooled kind of insurance carrier for cities and counties and. Um, so it can get a little bit better value uh with that, but you know, we do have an impact of nine percent. Uh, regardless, and then the the premiums um for employees will range from sixty-two dollars to two hundred eighty-five dollars a month. And then the city picks up uh the rest of that, so it's a ten percent for the employees, ninety percent for the city, so. Really favorable favorable for employees, um but it just, it also keeps a little skin of the game for them, if they're some of that premium cost. In terms of first, uh like Jordan spoke about again, you know, that's going to be the biggest driver for our personal services increase. And again, that went to and typically does, went to a kind of a uh an undershoot, if you will, of. Um, investment percentages for kind of the first pool. Um, so any anytime, you know, they they say they're going to get eight percent and they get seven and a half percent, it's a huge effect. Um, in addition to that, you're seeing an increase in in payroll, so. When the actuaries kind of project out that payroll is going to be in the future, they have to back into that number. And unfortunately, um you know, we get kind of this this increase in percentage that uh that we're able to actually absorb. Uh, within reason, but a lot of folks aren't, um. So, you know, it it was promised, I think, as we stated in this book, that in. Kind of mid twenty twenty about right now, we'd see a little bit of a of a plateau of these rates. But we'll see if that goes with the next, by name, so these rates will be fixed for two years and then they'll give us another another rate. And then, I guess, one twenty-seven, yeah, twenty-seven, one twenty-nine. So, um. We're luckily we're able to absorb that, there's a lot of other cities and districts that have to set up different accounts to kind of subsidize their rate and buy their rate down, basically. Um, you know, we thought about doing that, but at the same time. You know, you you run into the problem of tying up some of your extra cash for projects, um during bonding. And like Jordan said, if you have to have a coverage ratio of uh fund balance, then that will definitely impact that. Um, so the kind of the cost benefit was right there when we analyzed that. Uh, but a lot of that, I think, sisters, uh Kent, Fire District has done this with side accounts because they're, I think their percentage is from north forty. Uh, which is just kind of uh unrealistic, so. Again, so per's uh hundred thirty, hundred forty thousand dollars uh overall of a of a change from last year. And then, um as I typically tell council, have a rule of thumb, in terms of the effect, is about fifty percent to the general fund and the other fifty percent to. Uh, to water, streets, and sewer that have residential services in it. Um, okay, so going down, risk management, uh employee insurance, so. Uh, luckily, our employees, top one would stay really healthy, we have a very low retirement stop insurance rate. Um, and it's not expected to go uh very much this year at all, it's typically. Uh, with an increase, minor increases, and the the biggest driver of that really is the increase of personnel, so you increase personnel, you work this top, this goes right along with it. That's how you pay your premium. Um, and then uh property liability is only expected to go to five percent. We had a bigger jump last year largely due to an increase in replacement costs for city assets, things like that, so we took. Uh, quite a big hit last year, this year, definitely not as much. So that was uh, that was great to see that that trend kind of decrease. Uh, and then city debt, so the city, uh let's see, we got one on page thirty. So city debt, which is largely in the sewer and the sewer S T C funds, um. Uh, is uh kind of set to, I think. We have until mid twenty thirties to pay out that debt, City Hall also has some debts. Which will expire in two years, and I'll cover that in the City Hall Debt Service Fund. Um, so, uh, really decent sized expense there, it's about three hundred thousand dollars, uh but we've been paying that ever since twenty sixteen. We refinanced uh. That debt and then Urban Rental Agency, which we'll talk about a little bit later, I'll touch on it now, uh we have the availability to um. Simple online credit in our Urban Rental Agency. Um, and then we recently went through the exercise of evaluating, you know, maximum indebtedness and that, then again, we'll touch on this later, but. Uh, maximum indebtedness and our ability to kind of take out a little bit more debt in order to maximize that. Um, as you know, the agency kind of highlight, so uh we're going to continue to to serve our current city debt and um. We'll look at some prospects of Urban Rental debt going forward.
Can I, uh, yeah? Uh, I'm going to go back to the current thing, because I want to point to. Poor investment performance and rapid payroll are issues that the state has thrown upon us and costs us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth. This coming year from last year, so let's just keep our state people accountable for. As our population goes down, the state government's getting bigger, um other, some other cities which aren't performing as well are getting bigger. And uh let's just be sure that it's really comparable, that's coming from us, it doesn't have anything to do with how our city is. Our city does a great darn job um every year trying to keep these costs under control and other government agencies, you know.
And I want to jump in with a bring you totally, um I think that. You read the paper, you're going to see that school district is struggling to find out, we're going to make big cuts. Other cities is struggling, we're going to make big cuts. State is struggling, we're going to make cuts, all al- almost all good with first rates. And when I go back to page twenty-seven, it's one thing that that strikes me that this city hasn't done well. Well, it has added some employees, and that's what I showed in that S T email on page twenty-seven, the real key is to look at the full time equivalent. For residents, for one thousand people, that rate has dropped. Even though the city has become more perplexed, there's more to do. You know, our staffing rate per one thousand citizen is actually quite a bit lower, and that's one of the reasons why, yes, this is a lot of money, it's hard. But at the same point in time, because of sound practices by staff. And previous council, we're not sitting here trying to figure where we should find hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, half a million dollars in this budget, what we're going to cut up. Because of first. And um, you know, we said five is forty percent, that's because of twenty year retirement versus thirty, it's still. Um, it's not going to get better. It's unfortunate what it is, and uh. But I think that careful management has kept us from having to fall on the sword of big cuts that other agencies have had to do, I give credit to the folks here in this room, so.
Yeah, appreciate that, we have, I mean, we we're very deliberate in thinking when we contemplate hiring an individual and uh we've taken ventures over the years. To really evaluate that seriously, you know, restroom thing comes to mind, you know, that is, that is probably a one person job. And if we're able to re-contract that service and 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 with that, um we're able to kind of kind of manage. Um, you know, the the effect to employees, and we do that a little bit for I T services and some other things, and so it's not perfect, not to say that. You know, it's always going to be that way, but they, anytime we we contemplate hiring someone or fulfilling a need, we we take into consideration. Uh, some other options, I don't know, I guess I think we'll start.
Well, and at any time you hear citizens say we have our own police department, sheriff can clear it up, on and on and on and on and on. That first rate would be probably close to a half a million dollar increase if we had a police department in this town. That we that we don't.
Okay, moving on, uh Jordan talked about this a little bit too, these these next few pages are actually, you know, great snapshots if you're just looking at. Kind of the overall city uh. Snapshot of of revenue and expenses, and then especially trends over the years, so this um this graph right here, or. This chart right here on page thirty-four is this rate, so uh you know, the last five years of activity. And it's it's really interesting to see how much the city budget has grown, especially those those years.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
The other taxes.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, seems so broadly large, I'm not really. We define it was.
Yes, so that is largely lodging tax. Yeah. Yeah, it's hard when you when you provide a summary chart like that, it's it's hard to kind of group everything together, but yeah, the biggest driver of that is is lodging tax, I believe. Uh, gas taxes, so. A good question. Okay. So with that, we can start to run into the general fund, if that works for everybody.
Did you want to take a break?
Want to take a break, this point, okay?
Do a break.
Yeah, okay.
And so we can all. Shake off all this. Absorbive.
Good thing we can recover from the uh city.
Yeah, it's fun, I haven't taken ten minutes free. Uh, thank you, no, I'm going to do that, and so we'll start back at uh ten thirty-five.
Go for it, yeah, we're ready.
And um, Jordan, am I welcome to meet you back?
Yes. We are, so this this portion will do um presentation by departments. Uh, we've already did our top fund overview, jump straight to the first department in the. That's going to be page forty-one, I'll try to keep it lined up here if you spot a problem.
And I think you.
Go back to, I have other questions.
Page thirty-four.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just showing off clarification.
Yeah.
Um, I know the resources for revenue charged for services, that's ten point nine.
Yeah. That's going to be water and sewer charges.
Yeah.
That's a combination of.
And then transfers and then loan proceeds.
Yes. Yeah, so transfers in and loan proceeds, so transfers in, um and we'll touch on this with the City Hall Debt Service Fund, but. Um, since the water, street, sewer funds and the general fund use City Hall. Uh, they all kind of pitch it into page for City Hall's share of its debt. And so what they do is they transfer in funds to the City Hall Debt Service Fund, and then the City Hall Debt Service Fund pays for its share of revenue. So that's the first one, and then the second one is going to be um in Urban Rental, because this chart actually includes the Urban Rental Agency. So that shows that uh kind of those loan proceeds for uh the Adams Avenue project, we'll talk about later.
Okay, then one last question.
Yeah.
So the revenue's total. New resources, fourteen million dollars.
Yeah. So that's okay. Okay. A little bit, thank you, okay, yeah, you bet.
We just answered why it's forty-one, no, you're not, thirty-five.
That's correct, yeah. And then Urban Rental Agency, it's kind of, it's it's hard to separate them, but but combine them, um so we try to show a snapshot of both. At least in the struggle, so.
You now when you get to how the revenue collection fund works.
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to stipulate that for this year, but that didn't. Happy it's up, let's hack the gym and finance it, um. Yeah, page thirty-five and thirty-six is that, that's the city life's arrangement before that breaks it down like a fun, so then if you're looking at like charting sort of nervous. You'll see under the water and sewer fund, those are the rate, like customer rates, one point three million, one point five million. Second, breaks it down, so it's not so, there's different levels of summaries, right, so the high level summary and then it's going to break it down after the fun model.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on now, um we're jumping to the general fund, and we'll do this by department first, and then we'll cover the other ones. Um, I drew the the short straw, so I get to do the council manager department. Now, happy to do that, uh this is a, this is an interesting department because it is administration, so it's uh, you know, we're the city manager and my staff. Uh, Carrie. Um, and Rebecca, and then also work, and also expenses go as well, um so. You know, not a lot of expenses, you know, sometimes they go conferences and trainings, or we cater, so we like that, you know, all sorts of in this department. Then it's also the catchall for other, like council goals and other projects that we're working on, because to help out sort of a another catchall from the city, so like a non-departmental. Uh, department, which is pretty hilarious when you actually think about that name, uh departmental. Where things like general insurance or attorney fees and things like that involve. Here we have um a lot of that budgeted within uh this department, so I'll I'll highlight a few things because the numbers do change here and here. Um, if you want to go then. This page forty-two, yeah. Well, under materials and services, there's a lot of one time things that pop up in this department and then go away, um one of the things that wrote me that's, which I'm glad. Uh, is no longer budgeted because we're, we'll talk about this in our controls, or is that five hundred thousand, uh lower than the agency to basically. Uh, it's no longer budgeted because we're, we'll talk about this in our controls or that five hundred thousand uh lower government agency to basically. Infer the tax increment property taxes we get for bringing fun to debt uh so that we can fund projects. Um, we're. Uh, propose to do that uh in the next year. Um, so that's why there's no no longer that five hundred thousand. We're going to government agency. Um, but a couple of things to highlight here um that I had mentioned in the budget message, uh, the ninety eight thousand now their contracted services is a big. Uh, increase, uh, but really uh about quarter of that is just the ongoing contracts that we need to pay to have our website. Uh, posted in service. Um, we need to do digital backup because we're a public agency. So anytime we post anything on Facebook, we have to keep that stuff. That's we have to pay a company to keep that stuff. Uh, same with any kind of social media, electronic records. Um, and then anytime we adopt a change to our code, uh, we pay a company to codify that. Basically make sure that every. I is dotted and every T is crossed and that becomes a part of our uh official city development code. We also budget in here our contribution to C four C. Uh, they host and run um all the vision implementation team meetings. So. Team vision, Sister Sister Vision work, uh, the battle of dollars. Um. We are trying to ramp up our communications. Uh, thanks Rebecca and Carrie to their efforts. One of the things that we need and. Uh, saw some of these pictures in my presentation, but I would love to have more. Um, so we can get on Instagram, Facebook, we post more pictures. And so. We budgeted to contract with somebody um similar to what Export Sisters has done recently, getting video, um, drone footage. But photos of our beautiful town um so that we can uh get more lights and chairs. No, uh, it really helped. Have more of a library. Uh, city promotions and communications and things like that. Um, even with all our projects coming up, it'll be great to have photos of, you know, progress of project. Um, so we did budget ten thousand dollars to to contract with somebody to uh do that portion. And then we have the fifteen thousand dollars in civic leadership. Um, that's within there. I mentioned earlier, like the civic leadership academy uh program. Uh, another thing that we've been spending money on this year and rolling into next year is we. Been hosting these large meetings of uh officers and sisters country and. We had hired a facilitator uh for the first uh major meeting, I think, we have another one coming up and. We're anticipating we'll continue to be some facilitation services, a third party to help kind of have these community conversations. And so. We budgeted ten thousand dollars to have assistance with that. But then finally, that way finding signage, uh, the signage master plan is within that line too. Didn't really have a. A place to lay out in the city, uh, that when this kind of this catchall council manager, uh, because it's more than just parks, it's also streets. It's, you know, money and some of the things like that. So it's kind of a general fun uh supportive project. Uh, other uh things I I want to highlight, uh, this kind of carries throughout the entire city, but I want to mention it here. Legal services. This is an interesting one because this is one of those variable costs that sometimes can be outside of our control, but also something that we can't control. Um, wh- why I say it can be outside of our control, a lot of our legal fees have been developed more than other departments. Um, citywide, we've seen this trend down this year with only projecting to only spend about twenty five, twenty six thousand dollars on legal fees. So citywide, yeah, citywide. Um, what would it cost to have a city attorney? Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more. Um.
Plus first.
Plus first, yeah, that's that's all. Probably still contracting for specialized attorney services on water rights issues and things like that. So. Um, yeah, we're a city of thirty seven hundred people, a twenty staff, but having legal services only at twenty six thousand, that. I don't know, that that's an anomaly. I would expect that to change, especially with big things like the U G B expansion, other names, applied agents, and things like that coming. Um, that's where we really use a lot of city attorney time or attorney time, which is usually with land use, especially if there's like a little bit of deal or something like that. Um, but in general, government uh services like contracting, questions of governance, codes, things like that, uh, we really held that down. Uh, we've been pretty good about being selective and we want them to attend meetings or they may call to get their time. Um, so. You know, budgeting forty thousand dollars and having it in our eleven five, I don't know, projections, um, you know, we're. We're doing a pretty good job of of managing that cost. Um. And then uh, see, community services grants and and uh council manager budget, that's a group of thousand dollars there. Um, that's usually done in the summertime, but application process goes out and council selects uh. By the recipients. Um, and then finally, affordable housing grant program, I mean, two thousand, we're anticipating. Uh, executing the grant agreement with uh Habitat for Humanity uh of Sisters. Um, they were selected as a recipient. For the affordable housing grant program uh for project just uh behind us, um. All the parts. I'll check which cottage and. Questions?
Yeah. I noticed the public outreach project went down. Um, we talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, I think this is where we're budgeting uh certain things. Um. We have, you know, put money in there for uh the house of silver, that um facilitation services and things in prior years. This is also kind of a catchall um. Sort of area for a lot of the. Bigger meetings that we host, like the council had a goal, having three or four town halls per year. We did the costs associated with. Catering those meetings, making up facilitator, equipment, maybe stuff like that. Uh. And so we, you know, usually include, you know, at least ten thousand dollars in that line, I think, just for those major events. And then CLI gets their supplies to that plan too. So the trash bags that we purchased for the community leadership initiative that. There's a trash picked up in the support.
Sounds like some of those then have been uh maybe reallocated up for contracted services.
That was one question.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Quite a bit of a question allocated.
Yeah.
We had a right account.
Yeah, we had like visioning was in that last year. We had some, we had some other bigger projects that we lost here that have.
Right.
Great minds. Yeah, you might see that in other places. I mean, that, you know, obviously we have a lot of my items. And yeah, and it, as the council knows, they sign the checks, we have lots of checks and balances uh in the city and. Things get coded to different lines. Um, sometimes we can make adjustments and we code them and stuff, but a lot of times they just get bottom there. What's important to me is that bottom line that we stay within our budget. If it's still within different lines, it just becomes a budget communication issue. Um, but really it's that bottom line that matters for a bunch of more.
I have a couple of questions on that whole family access network. Budget by thousand, point sixteen hundred and I know that we kind of freshed that out, you know, from the grand theft days.
Yeah.
In some line items, some of the items.
Yeah, that's that's a a great observation and we probably shot that a little bit low on our on our expectations for year end. I mean, we would probably see that this is getting closer to five thousand dollars as the year continues on. We just probably. Yeah, like I said, under undersold that expenditure. Um, typically they use most of that. And remember, that's for not only utility assistance, but also with the shower. Shower token programs, we have, you know, queen operated showers. Um, at Village Green restroom or Village Green Park, rather. Um, and so they they typically use, you know, five to, it just depends on your, five to nine hundred dollars worth of uh shower buckets for that. So that's integrated into that amount as well. But yeah, good, good, uh, that's a good observation there.
You know, like I'm chat, it's just kind of this.
Yeah. Yeah, they'll they'll, they they kind of keep track and and then obviously we do in in our utility department with Kim. Um, and so it's a good double check for that and then go call and confirm, hey, you know, how much do we have left? And we'd like to. You know, so and so, contribute so and so, you know, five hundred, you know, five hundred dollars or it could be fifty dollars for an availability assistance.
Okay, and then I just have a question about the, you know, legal fees, you know, the twenty thousand and I just. And I know you just excited to settle like with the, you know. And so go change for some help. Probably be discussed. Um. Just it's a. Enough.
Realistic.
Realistic, I'm I'm not. It just seems like we're taking all of that. Things that might need to be, you know. Teeth crossed and.
Yeah, I think you'll see, oh, I can't speak for Jordan, but I think you'll see that a little bit more in community development. Typically, that's a higher dollar amount than than as a council manager, but but also we used to have an attorney at each meeting. Um, but you know, we have, we've got great staff here that knows procedures that you guys have experienced. You know, we don't really. Find the need to have someone drive all the way here and spend, you know, hours and then drive all the way back. So we've been a little bit more mindful of how you. Um, how we utilize that.
Yeah, exactly. It would be under community, well, I don't know if this costs, but even twenty thousand, I mean. We don't wanna, again, it's hard to anticipate what issue may come up, uh, house services, camping boats, things like that, you know. Recent years have taken a lot of, you know, kind of the um city attorney time. And then even kind of state legislation that comes out or something where we. How we interpret that or how we implement this. Um, other things that also take a lot of time, um, we have to bring on is. Um, franchise agreements and negotiating those and stuff, contract review.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we probably will have a few potentially that will come in over the night here, so.
Thank you.
Right, yeah. Also, we're ready to flip the page.
All right. Go to finance. Um, and first of all, I I remiss in in thanking a lot of uh of staff helped through this budget, uh, you know, newly uh to put the budget covered. Uh, Kerry does a ton of work and can review, thorough review of the budget book. Uh, Kim as well and Scott uh and Paul Jackson. So, you know, thanks to staff for are taking a lot of their extra time in and above uh what they do with the normal databases to. To help out with this. So I apologize for not mentioning that earlier, but uh definitely not allowing this for sure. Um. So in the finance department, uh, we got a lot of work done last year. Um. You know, and changing the utility platform um was was a big leap for us and that came with a lot of, a lot of learning. Uh, a lot of patience. Uh, we upgraded the phone system, which was, which was great. So we've we've been off quite a bit in the last couple of years in terms of things like that. And this, as they, they, they seem like they're not, you know, huge projects, uh, they they do take a lot of time. Um, so uh this year, we're gonna um kind of take on the initiative of assessing, you know, making sure our fee and our master fees are. Assess the appropriate amount. Um, and just some other uh smaller things, uh, just kind of always evaluating our internal. Internal controls via uh purchase order process, um, which our authors have talked about from time to time. We just have a very basic way of doing that and. Uh, they don't love that. Not that it's really a problem, it's something that they they point out. Um, and then always just replacing technology, just kind of be most efficient whatever we have. And that usually means computer replacement, books, sessions, things like that. Um. So uh and kind of going down to the numbers, um, you know, nothing really jumps out, you know, pretty consistent. Um, I think compared to last year, so um, you know, we just uh we're gonna. Keep doing our our job as best we can and pushing forward. So. A whole lot of of groundbreaking projects in in finance, unfortunately. Kim, do you want to add anything?
Covered it.
I covered it?
Yeah.
I I'm curious, yeah. An error or twenty point seven FTE on it.
So uh the FTEs are allocated to utilities in different departments and such. Yeah. So that's just kind of our share for that. And that's mostly my time, a lot of.
That's very big, but I I know on your terms is significant more than that.
Right, right. They're placed in there, but then, you know, all all personnel are allocated towards the funds. Yeah.
And on the, yeah, increasing the office equipment.
Yeah.
And not, yeah, how fair.
No, that's uh, that's actually for a lot of desk um and furniture kind of replacement. We've been kind of. Kind of hobbling by here the last five years of that and um we're gonna take a little more serious to look about economic improvements, maybe some state of desks, things of that nature.
Can you share us for Johnson?
Yeah, maybe.
Or even whole chair for councils that are more comfortable.
Okay.
These chairs.
These chairs.
Once we're in.
Come on, Jordan.
Okay. You're reviewing the budget. Money for. What do we have saddles here?
Right. Okay, so uh for the next general fund department, we'll have Jackson on up. Thanks, Jackson. Um, Jackson's gonna talk about maintenance, so um we've gone long ago, but we're gonna be on page forty five. Sorry.
Hi, Jackson, we manage public works departments. Uh, covering maintenance department and general fund. Uh, this one is for uh. Routine and unforeseen maintenance of our vehicles and buildings and facilities. Uh, gonna be continuing on with uh work planned from prior year. Uh, mainly. We'll see that in the uh cap outlay with um. Wildfire medication for the city hall landscaping property. And they are. Allocation program due uh for each part. We started working on security cameras uh for some of our facilities, uh, hopefully in some of that work going into the next year as well.
Yeah, that's one of those projects that. We'll probably straddle the fist or we don't quite know what exactly the amounts are gonna be. It might be close. Um. And if and if it does, you know, portion to twenty five, twenty six, and would this come back to council of this budget adjustment?
I wanted to say thank you also. This is, you know, it's noting as I was reading through um. The first one for the last year where you heard that it's kind of great because the systems are pushing positively. Um, this is the kind of thing that happens all the time here. Uh, I think the staff is really responsible. About um making sure that it's necessary to keep projects and evaluating at the time, so. I just wanted to throw that in because we didn't say.
By the power of seeing circumstances.
Right. Okay. And we move on to tourism. Like by popular demand. What do you know? And so we're on now page forty seven.
Hi, Kerry Brock, this is City Manager. Um, talk about the tourism department, you know, there are zero FTEs in this department. This is one of our contract wheel services that. Jordan just spoke to. I'm under contract with Exlore Sisters, which we have, we helped um live up about three years ago and they're running on their own right now. Uh, we are contracting for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh that we give them as part of that collective T L T, which is about thirty three percent of the reserve in dollars. And then there is a portion of a point nine nine percent and um where thirty percent goes to. Or the housing fund and the other portion. Um, under the current contract, that full amount goes back to Exlore Sisters. So that's an amount that gets paid at the end of the year, mutually, and sometimes the total of our T L C dollars are in. So. When you look at the um. Revenue for that department, um, you know, we're under contract to three hundred and fifty thousand, but if you look, uh. Our actuals in twenty four, three, twenty four were more than that, four hundred and eleven. That's that extra uh percentage that came in. And then if you look at our requested budget this year, it's a little bit less than we're projecting, down about two percent in T L T. Um, again, for those guessing games and what we're gonna look like with the economy, what people are gonna be traveling. So. Um, Exlore Sisters, uh, we are part two, I am a staff base onto that board and. Um, council president is also a member of that board, so we attend their meetings every month. Um, get to take a look at their financials and how they're running that entity, which at this point has been very, very well. Objectives for twenty five, twenty six for this apartment, um, really in coordination with them and it's like they're settled. Is to look at the way fighting signs, so working with them, and so sort of made for that way fighting sign and signage master plan. And then they are also our education, dark side education program with Scott and CP, and so they'll continue with that. Um, amongst the other work that they do. Any questions?
I don't believe that they did over in here. I will say that as passing another meeting, talking with the city about that, they have a. Bigger and better sign shop than they are going to. They have two degrees where they're on way finding signs and and they offer the services. Have to other municipalities to make discounts um over retail. So you saw that.
That's great.
On factor.
You're all good signs.
Yeah.
Eric, can you explain the thing that asked payments, which comes out of seventy percent of the point thirty nine percent? Um. And just that, you know, if I get this wrong, they actually don't put that into their budget until the next year. So they're being um. Real responsible about how they spend that money and like even though they get it in September, they don't actually put it into the next year's calendar year budget, which starts in January. So they uh they don't A count on it and B don't spend it right away because they're being. Trying to be reflectively as responsible as the city was for funds. That, I did I correct and they have um last year.
Did I correct? And they have last year, the staff were contracted services to have somebody help them do that marketing plan. And help them follow their social media. That's a great big question.
It is important to note. Those who are not aware. Four sisters right now, so you have to give one. I guess they're bad at a little bit of help, but there's a lot going on there and. When we move contract and set this particular program up and then. Cut the reins and turn them loose, we've been really absolute process. It keeps on keeping the bottom a little slow, but it takes a while to be this is going. And I feel very comfortable, these dollars to be spent appropriately, adequately and adequately for the services that we are expecting to be spent for.
No, then I'm saying this way. They're not actually there on calendar here and yeah, it was pretty purposeful.
All right, moving on to the parks department. Jackson's gonna come back here. We're on page forty nine.
Almost seven.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, I'm moving on to parks department. This one is going to be. Down from shopping maintenance, but they are part of the facilities. As we heard earlier, the campground contributes. We did begin the master planning process for Northwest Park. Uh, real PR planning grant. Uh, we are. Continuing with water wise and firewise projects into the next, so they're. Riving out some. Water hungry, water thirsty. Her replacement for subsurface irrigation, water wise landings. Small strays to. The labyrinth, some fencing around there. On park at Sisters Day, running party. And the sidewalk at Village Green, leading to the Veterans Memorial and Hill Park. And they know for that structure there.
Yeah, as you go down a lot of the detail, feel some of those, and I'll point them out here. You can see those thin, thin light items apart maintenance here. And light items seven eighty six. And you can see some of those projects also have allowed in the forty three thousand five hundred.
We're getting a little bit too, but I feel like it's pretty good. Not more special, which is kind of easy.
Yeah, we'll probably go back to our wildfire mitigation plan. See how that is addressed.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully maybe it's. Probably say we've been all the same time.
Yeah, if you need to take it from the top, or be okay with me, but that's just me.
You you might be laying on the metal. I and I appreciate what you just said. I actually have a system about the name of photos of the roof of the structure. At Village Green Covering and pine needles from one end to the other. So I just left firewise meeting and. I saw this and what do you guys do with that? I was getting to do the same. You're building better explode any minute. So I think that getting our shakes off as soon as possible. Yeah, or at least reaching for pine needles off the shakes that are there would be. A smart move. So it's, we don't look like we're not following through on things we're saying.
That's the part of your teammates that are watching. Move any else who are excited to go with.
Miss the addition of the. Yeah, staffing wise, as we kind of are taking on more infrastructure and manage. You know, we have the bandwidth to maintain them and get their reasons to be, you know.
Everybody's gonna use those bags to clean up. Yeah, oh, you know, Justin can weigh in, but that is, that's one thing that we will continue to. That we work on, right? It's a fast moving town. We're adding facilities, we're adding the ability to help. And one of my concerns there, you know, it will have a probably impact on all staff if we have a dumping station there. And there's, you know, unlike the campground, which we have camp posts that are there to help us shoot, assist, unlock it, things like that. We won't over here. And so, you know, we can staff, we'll call staff will probably get called out there. I can see there's going to probably be maintenance issues with the dumping station, with the water fill station. You know, paying for all state of the art technology and all that, but. Then you add EV chargers, which could have maintenance issues, how we had that contracted to that service and all that, and this will be taken into account. Also adding Northwest Park at some point, right? We're going to master plan, maybe facing that any of the next couple of years. So that's one thing that we probably will look at is we have all these needs across the city, talk about communications person, all that, but. There can be added actual facilities that are going to be there over time. Utility workers or not that, but. We, you know, that that facility has not, we haven't cut the ribbon yet. But this will be the first year when we'll see the operation transportation center to see.
What's the new, in terms of transportation out, in terms of that existing forest service restroom? Is there, was that in shape? It's been a product not that way. Good. I wasn't sure, the building itself isn't.
Right.
The roof will shake. I'm not sure what kind of shape the restroom would render, but it's gonna be a significantly made decision rest with the specs. I don't perceive your rest seems to be much, but. I saw a work plan, but I thought.
Very happy to see the ABA sidewalk. So happy to see that. And I just was learning about dog park and. Increase in insurance in the city related to that expense. Obviously, we'll kind of look through all of that.
Yep. It's recreational immunity, so it shouldn't be too much of an impact, but. They they might, with an additional part, they might appropriate that to do insurance rates. It won't be material, I guess. Recreational meeting, for those who don't know, I mean, if you provide the. Amendment to somebody at no charge, then you you get a little bit of kind of liability to meet the. To an extent, there's been a couple of situations and. Passive have tried to challenge that, but. They don't have the same example as seventy nine. So. As far as the, you know. Facilities, the bridge and the other, we'll look at that if we get bids for the project. I think it's one of those things we probably can accommodate it. I feel like there'll probably be. Reasonable amount of dollars. I don't know if we need to add budget for that. Jackson, I don't say that, but I think you could probably find a way to, if you need additional cost to do the other. Yeah, it's a lot of ours, especially for insurance provider. Yeah. Well, unfortunately, I I talked a lot about this already, so I know I have a whole lot to go into more detail. We talked about the. Contract negotiations. This is actually going to come across for this month. Uh, in terms of the new contract with the sheriff's office. You know, just into the detail of the narrative, one of the things that we did this last year, we did it this whole year, is a community survey. Police and stuff, where the priorities, we generally hear the same. Of interests with trapping pedestrian enforcement. And speeders, people like that, which actually is not a bad thing. Our crime rate or crime level, say, is is pretty low, right, in terms of, you know, crimes like. Assaults and injuries. Type or tattoo crimes, but there is still, you know, sentiment that perception of. Safety is important for this community. And people like to see at least vehicle, I like to see a deputy in the neighborhood. Be one point ninety square miles with three, you know, patrol deputies. Of course, they're not all at the same time, but and then lieutenant. You do see vehicles and we also have, you know, highway patrol come through, which is county compared. We have the US Department, so you might American law enforcement officer, you know, in town. And so that does help people feel like this. And so one of the things that we're working with them on is more of those community based things like trafficking with pedestrian enforcement. And one of the things we've talked about is doing my best to save food events, where they basically do things and you cross law enforcement and. You don't like to be hot in those if you're a resident, but people like to see them. We've also, the National Night Out event has been pretty successful here the last couple of years, in conjunction with the fire district this is in August. Yeah, and basically community wide event where they're invited to Village Green. Police officers, fire. Firefighters, that were out all their protecting town, something that we probably partner on more in terms of city participation between events. But generally, you know, staff have been relatively stable with our contractor, patrol deputies and lieutenant. You know, Lieutenant Davis lives here, his kids are in school, he's. So council meeting is required, gives monthly updates to the city council. Generally very available for people to ask questions, show up to the sheriff's office or. You know, stop them on the street, ask questions and stuff. So generally, I think people are pretty good level of service. But this is a big impact to our budget, as I talked about. We're going from a fixed cost of. Seven hundred fifty thousand to over a million now, which, you know, is a three hundred thousand dollar impact to the general fund. Which, as we talked about, you know, needing other services, other, you know, staffing and things like that. This is something that does weigh on. You know, additional parking points or additional general fund employees, I think communications person, staff, things like that. But it is a priority service. It's a core service the community depends on. It is a part of the mixed sisters unique, special. We tell you, the client does not have this level of service under contract with the Shute County. And we're a big tourism town. We actually need a little bit more law enforcement here than you could expect for a city of. We're in Eastern Oregon or, you know, other parts of the state. All we don't need group patrol officers or deputies and lieutenant. But here, when our town gets. You know, ramped up with thirty thousand additional people or whatever, you know, we need a little bit more. Say, so I think it's being explained, you know, justifies the expense and is what we could probably expect. Given hospital officer listings, also the fact that. More portable than we are. Any questions?
Now, I wanted to clarify, the school district pays for their own school resource officer as well. He does still come to Shute County Sheriff's Office, so. You know, obviously, there's something bigger to happen. That person can be brought in as well. So, you know, there is a little. Kind of unrecognized, spoken. Safety question that there isn't another person usually.
Yeah, and we had this, we would actually probably be taken off on how that possibly. Hey, media development. That went for a first time up. But only if you said everything that needs to be said. Guess there's a few more things that to say.
On page fifty three. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Scott will. We developed a character. And so what our department consists of, there's five employees, including myself. Also, I have a personal planner, Matt Burton, an associate planner for the issue. A planning technician slash administrative assistant, Karen Jenkins. So we do a variety of things, including processing reviews applications, all regular reviews applications. As well as to a permanent briefing, you know, to, as has been done with the technical. Building service, I don't know, six, three years, but we do the finding. We also do a lot of long range planning activities. We're always doing something long range wise and. Long range is kind of looking out to that twenty, twenty two, twenty three timeframe. Most of lately, we're working on that. We started actually nearly. For this coming year, twenty twenty three, twenty four, this one is going to be twenty four, twenty five. This one year, and we'll continue on in twenty five, twenty six, this whole year. So there's some carryover for listed funds related to that. We also do a process fairly regularly with all the code notes that respond to. Council of all the state laws, changes in state law that require us to do that. And then we're in a third year of our code enforcement program. That is a combination of proactive code enforcement as well as complaint based. There's things that we are looking after the upcoming fiscal year work plan, the pocket of government management, obviously. Continuing the, you know, we should give that the process. That's our. Part of our biggest push right now to make sure that process is completed. We hope by the twenty twenty five, but there's a chance that it could stand out, you you're far better depending on different factors. We also have funded within with that contract that we have with our consultant to do some area planning. Which is the step that goes on after we give that process. Wish that you have six month process or so. If we have two different areas that we have to claim for, that might increase some of the costs for consultants to. And then, as been mentioned, the council has. Known and directed the staff to update our compensation criteria, which is basically the steps involved in the. Requires city, city will expect within the compensation in the future. Which could involve increased legal costs. We talked a lot about legal fees and. It's kind of surprised to see that sort of. This seems like the useful odds. But overall, I guess it's it's starting to lower the budget, but. Those costumes, we can always rely on, seeing you turn the board and do it now. And try to try to keep it to an L, but inefficient. But I consider that the protection is smart, especially. You know, if what goes on with me, there's always the chance of an appeal or. That would require some additional legal assistance. We're also busy with wildfire condition, as we can see with our code numbers for building hardening, municipal space. We're working on giving that adaptive. Now, we're also involved education and persons for people to actually implement those. Roles. We are also continuing to. Convene our citrus country law that conditions. To be very valuable for the human events, a public player, official, as our local fire officials. As a kind of one opportunity for them to really get together and talk about things accordingly. It's it's kind of surprised. That because they're so busy, they don't obviously get a time to kind of get together and exchange ideas. We'll continue that. Formal housing, continue to see funding source options for formal housing through our. Our housing plan was adopted, so there you go. Code amounts to remove barriers to formal housing and comply with state law. Will be a focus in the next year and upcoming years. In the future. And then dark skies implementation has been noted that that would be a. Got our ordinance updated to meet guidelines for dark skies certification, which we will complete. Really this year. Now the next step is to start the education. Now, the next step is to start with the education, uh, process, because we're on a, on a timeline to, uh, bring our, uh, non-performing lighting performance, uh, it was five years and now it's less than five years, so. Uh, if you have, the, uh, pushing will be on, uh, for that and, and all of that is, uh, uh, both the city put in some, uh, effort, dollars behind its own call to fight into, also walk the law, uh, with our, with our own, I mean. Like to make sure that, uh, it's, it's a compliance as well as pretty much fine, uh, which was referred to, uh, to help the public down with their. Uh, lighting that could be, so we'll get that program up soon. And then, uh, uh, well, you know, one of the council goals was to pick on their design standards, uh, you know, that's, uh, uh, in a, uh, in the future, uh, quite a bit more involved, but we're also going to do kind of a reassessment of what our G C B might say regarding. And how well they're serving the community, um, so that could involve any possibility of a consultant to help us out with that. Um, I think we've taken a good chance that we get some grant money for that as well. Uh, you know, grant money for anything that basically, consultants, uh, the production policy of the state was really supportive of. Then grants, so we'll go after every possible grant that, uh, they have out there for that. So, uh, I think, uh, in the numbers, basically, the big numbers for us are, are obviously outside the, personal accounts or, or the, uh, contracting services, um, which I, I believe involves, uh, some of that's the carrier level of fifty, if you do. Uh, and some of that's for the consultants, uh, uh, one of their dollars, the money ones. We did talk about the education, we get, uh, some art funding for them in that, uh. We're trying to, uh, gain certifications, uh, finding certifications and then requiring us to help maintain those certifications. And that's something we encourage, that continued education. And then, uh, the public outreach, I think, is, is junk, uh, you know, you can jump, I think that, uh, really, it's for, uh. Education, maybe on the dark skies, uh, for the vision, yeah, and, and so. Any questions on here?
Scott, on the, uh, the K L C, the, for now. What is that?
That was a, uh, uh, a grant that, uh, we got to help to bring talks for the weekend.
Um, I have a question, um. You know, it's in our, uh, city council goals, I just want to discuss it really quickly. The additional modifications to the S T Rs, is that about the condo issue, is that? Is that a targeted thing or are we cracking that thing quick?
What, pardon me? Yeah, there was a couple, um, there was one, one kind of, uh, item that was left, uh, that was discussed in the planning commission, and it has public testimony about, and that was city council level. Um, the economy issue was the one that you received some information on, that discussed at the whole setting. Uh, I think the idea is that, yeah, it'd be more targeted and limited scope than what we did, the wholesale review, survey, it's all that, I'm good.
Is that, uh, reflected in the contract that serves it or?
Yeah, it'd be staff.
Okay. Seems like we've been talking about S T Rs for years and I'm just like, let's move on, if that's the only thing, that's fine.
Yeah, good question, so, oh, remember. So, that is kind of one of those where it doesn't have a great place to land, uh, many years ago. We decided that, uh, it would be vested in for, uh, human development. And that is, uh, the city's share of the transportation grant for transportation through town. So, the city gets, uh, the grant from C O I C through O dot. And so our contribution is the thirty-four thousand and then. And then we get the thirty-one back. So the, the net contribution is about four thousand dollars for C O I C to provide transportation services through town. And the reason why it's got that description on it is that's what they require, so it's not super user friendly to figure out what that is.
Thank you, question? One?
Perfect. Last department?
Hey, what about, yeah, you, you can do it here, sure. Fairly rostered and some similar, um, again, this is our economic development department, F T E zero. Uh, and so this is how we fund, um, the sisters, um, country economic development through economic development, um, for Central Oregon. As we get into the numbers, Joe might have to supplement some information here, but basically this is Eric Sterling, he's our, you know, area director. And he runs, um, basically economic development for the trade sector, so goods that are, made or built here and moved out of the community, which is probably what he focuses on. Uh, I think with that, and the council knows that he does a little bit more than that for us. And one of the things I wanted to point out, both in last year's accomplishments and initiatives objectives was, is continuing support of trade and sector development, including assisting the support of workforce housing and childcare. Which is maybe on the borderline what his, um, job description would be, he's also been key in coordinating. With our business community, um, on a number of different issues, um, bringing education for the community for our business, um, leaders, owners, operators in the past year, so one of the things that I wanted to point out in the numbers, Joe, I have to open here. In the revenue, um, we can get a bounty grant for a motion at what this program costs, and that's what that first line is. And then Eric is bored, actually, some fundraising. So that is where, where that number comes into play, and then the general fund subsidizes that program by this year about ninety-four thousand dollars, so. That, right, shot there, right, I'm getting it, um. And then otherwise, use the subscriptions after our E D Co, one of them, as a city, subscribe to E D Co and our cool status number totally. Um, which means we have a person on their board, Jen, Mary lets it go, if you are on the board, yeah, that's okay, I'm on the board. Um, and then, those guys, they're very capable of, which is, um, there in case we, set up to, that was not the one, part of what we have not done in a number of years, right? Pretty straightforward, I think that a lot of the council actually probably are in more reverse on this than I am, um, they, I think, that's it. They may need to answer.
Yeah, I, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, uh, which is, uh, E D Co. Region is going through another strategic planning process, and one of the things that's being discussed at the regional board level is, how E D Co is evolving from just concentrating on trade and sector to, these other peripheral things that are being affected, um, uh, by the economy, which is housing and childcare and some other things, and we're, uh, I think everybody at the, at the regional board is acknowledging local advisory, uh, people such as Eric in our community. Um, are doing a lot more than what is of just trying to attract businesses or health businesses. Uh, out of the business park, which is these childcare and housing, which is affecting how much businesses come to the state. And not only that, but also a larger, uh, role in, uh, lobbying to the state to make that just a general, um, economic environment that's better for businesses as well, so, uh, I think we'll see a lot of that reflected, not this year and this year's budget, but maybe down the road about how does that? How does that work into our budget and is there more time necessary to cover some of that stuff? Because it is a scope change, um, that is being considered, so.
I did want to know, next up to this, in our reserves, this is one of those contracts that we keep reserved for, um, it's one of our larger contracts. But, you know, as far as this is in the, I'm D C S M, so that is one of the, yeah.
Jerry, can you look at this, scan membership program offers?
I will need to, that's a great one again. Yeah, it's, 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 it's somewhat of a subscription program for the businesses to, uh, that are on, represented on the board, um, and. Um, I am also a business member that is part of that group. And it basically, it just kind of provides a local buy-in, um, to local program, so. Uh, businesses know that they're representing, uh, and helping out with the, uh, economic, um, development of systems. So it's not a huge, um, moneymaker, it's more of just an acknowledgement by some of the local businesses. Uh, that, that they know it's important, it just kind of adds to the local program more.
In the same, say. That's a pretty, that also. Since Eric sometimes, um, does a lot of work for us, is kind of coloring outside of lines. That this, this is a much smaller amount of money that helps him perhaps even justify back to his, uh, reporting groups that, uh, that's been, uh, covered by local dollars as opposed to, would be.
Well, I, I think so, in a perfect world and in a bigger community, um, such as, uh, those, fundraising dollars could probably pay for a larger portion of their local program, uh, obviously in a small community like ours, it's not. It's not economically viable to do that, but it's always good to get a little buy-in from, from the community to recognize what he's doing. That is out, kind of that outside the line stuff, and I, I really think that this is a, an acknowledgement of the growth of E D Co itself as an organization. Just to, uh, acknowledge all these different issues which, you know, they all affect the bottom line of economic components. Especially, uh, some of those businesses out in the business park that are actually, um, you know, they're sending local products such as fully get out. Um, you know, region-wide, international, um, citrus coffee is another one. So, uh, yeah, they're sending our products, uh, that are made here in sister hardware. And it, it's kind of a sense of pride to give, so it's really cool.
Okay, what's next?
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
That was the general fund. We made it through the general fund, we're halfway through the book, um, we still have a lot of funds to go, uh, the next fund, I think, uh, we're going to build. Will be, uh, getting into the utilities, I think we'll start with the street fund, yeah, it's on page sixty-four. That's just going to come back up and. Let you all, street fund.
Okay, so, uh, street fund, funds, uh, horse road is as well as bike and pet facilities, uh. Primary, uh, revenues for this fund, uh, local gas tax, state highway tax, and franchise fee settlement, uh, mentioned earlier. Uh, objectives for next fiscal year are, uh, include pack projects, filling gaps in the bike competitive network. Of course, our annual road maintenance and, uh, some water wise, uh, landscaping. Um, in some bush trees islands, in particular, South Bushwa, again, ripping out the sign, putting some subsistence recreation along this one. Um.
Yeah, so kind of looking through, you know, a lot of those objectives, um, kind of looking at now, uh, kind of the number detail, starting on page sixty-six. You know, like, all the franchise fees are lined down in there, in addition to the state highway tax of the twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and then one other item of note is that, uh, small city allotment or S C A grants are receiving for the, the North, North Locust project, yes, right? So that comes in, you'll see that coming into revenue here, and then, um, a lot of those projects that, that Jackson just talked about are, are in capital outlay. So you have the Elm Street project, North Locust four door project, um, the East Port Looky Me project, Campport. Uh, multi-use pack is in there as well, so, um, if you look down here. Kind of on the more part of page sixty-seven, yeah, yeah, all those are kind of bundled in here. And then we have our infrastructure as well, infrastructure for us is overlays, and that's all that it is, so. Uh, we've allocated two hundred thousand dollars, excuse me, for that, that line item as well. We've been pretty consistent with that throughout the years, uh, as I mentioned before, you know, as, um, franchise fees and the gas tax, you know, remain, somewhat constant in the street fund, we're able to do a lot of those projects, so, uh, you know, tremendous advantage to have, when the brush shoots well maintained. Um, you know, one of the things I think a lot of people that don't look at this book a lot, um, is you'll see, and, uh, line item seven forty-nine in the road maintenance, and that's a huge dollar amount right there. Road maintenance is typically for like slippery seals, uh, cracked ceiling, uh, chip ceiling and head drop, things like that, so. Or like top service, uh, top service kind of maintenance, you know, um, and that's also the reason why that is quite high. Um.
But, you know, this is where I get to do my plug for, um, the effects, uh, with the street fund, um. Uh, I heard we said this before, we're in a great, great spot with our own, again, a lot of what we've heard today is, is true to, to, bro. Um, this community since two thousand, um, you know, when really things started to take off, and so, you know, we're in a position because of the way. The state is funded, localities are funded in Oregon, growth does benefit, makes like infrastructure. Uh, so, me and my sisters were benefiting off both on the general fund growth, but in places like the street fund. Being able, but franchise fees, a hundred percent to our street fund, having the local gas tax that was approved by voters, that, that. The, the three cents is unique in Oregon, there's not that many communities, there's a few that have more three cents, um. And then, uh, being able to fully fund road maintenance, both overlays and some of those treatment sites, there are seals and chip ceiling. Keeps our pavement condition index above the P C I E D. And these are numbers that probably don't mean a lot to a lot of folks, but they do for us, because that is your sweet spot. We're getting the biggest bang for your buck in terms of maintaining a good road network. And keep in mind, this is central Oregon with lots of fluctuations with freeze, thaw, ice, freeze, buzz. That we're able to get out there and treat these roads on what, every five year cycle. So that we don't have to go and spend a million dollars rebuilding roads, you know, every twenty years or so, um. Cities across the state struggle with this, this is the state's big legislative package this year. We're in a good position now, will we forever be that way? Probably not. Growth will slow eventually, roads will continue to deteriorate to the point where we can have to do bigger investments. And gas tax is not going to be at the same level it is today, even with increasing at the state level, we're going to have to have a state. And even cities at some point look at alternatives to how we plan to do maintenance, not there yet. You know, we've seen it on the horizon at some point, um, a lot of cities go into like a street maintenance fee or other types of charges to, to cover that kind of maintenance. But we're okay for now, um, and all of Jackson and all the crew have done a great job of maintaining our streets here, um. So that's not those feel on streets, um, and, uh, just have to always kind of put that out there someday, someday, we'll have to start thinking about it. You only have to drive events, so what happens when the street index falls below eight, yeah. Or, 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 you need a four wheel drive vehicle. And, I mean, that'll, same. Well, I will say.
Um, I'm not sure if this is already under any, but, um, are we looking at, looking at upgrade that the street lights downtown? Dark skies, is that a list that are before?
We are, but we did not budget for it yet.
Okay.
We're still, we periodically look at options and are studying it. How to be creative with an idea that fits the look and feel of the town, um, but it's the one.
Okay.
The smaller facilities around, we have this year.
Great.
Uh, and part of that capital outlay number is, uh, the city's contribution for the heat charge and, uh, this way, it's a problem.
You know, I want to say this, the local gas tax, this is a special moment, well, I'll worry about electric cars, um. I'm a proponent of, you'd be charged for the charges, we have fees, discussions about that, there's a lot of things that are more than just, my thoughts, but it's very easy to calculate an equivalent, the gas tax, kilowatt charge. Make it come up about the same, be per, filling your tank on an automobile sixty to eighteen gallons, it's not profit size, it's really pretty easy. And, and, uh, so we, we need to think about, well, the quality of gas tax, perhaps we need to change its terminology, so we can include tax on. Uh, electric charging stations, especially as a big power plant in the town. So, just a thought there, but, uh, as a member of M V, uh, I'm more than ready to, to that charge added to the cost, just, just. You don't worry about when you put fuel in the car, you shouldn't be worrying about when you put electricity in the car, you know.
Uh, yeah. Well, I have a question too, kind of along the same, especially, is there a pot of money or consideration here for updates like frost locks down past games? Like flashing a sign or embedded flashing LED, pretty. Like flashing a sign or embedded flashing LED, pretty connected to that, to help the road safety process. Kind of a, do you stay, kind of a, we're assuming?
Yeah, it's, so it is accountable to have these conversations go out about that. Um, we've been eating our bag. We have one that's actually coming, um, at the mobility hub at Williams, which will be our first test case. Um, we've talked to them about what kind of grant funding there would be to partner with them on additional uh, crossings, uh, that would be the rapid yellow flashing, uh, crossing downtown. Um, we just haven't identified the locations yet. Um, so it's not reflected in the budget, but it is accountable.
The rules.
Yeah. I should, but it's not legend because it's no doubt project, but there will be activity in town this year on the Nescade. Uh, they have to replace all of the
ADA ramps.
Which, yeah.
And we do budget sort of potentially, these sites every year.
Any other questions, comments?
Good job. He's going to be here for a while. So moving on to page sixty-eight, uh, for the transportation or street STC fund, many use those synonymically.
So, uh, she has seen on, uh, this end of the asset in the streets, uh, new streets, new development. A project that was completed last this year was, of course, uh, the US Port Locust found without uh, the cooperation with ODOT. They gave construction on Barclay Drive, Phase One, and then of course, uh, work on the transportation hub. For the next six years, going to be, uh, the transportation SCC things.
Yeah, and you'll see also through the capital improvements, this four and seven, four and seventy-three thousand dollars into Jackson's point, even though that roundabout is done. Uh, the city itself has their own contribution to that roundabout. And the way that works is we, we basically have a government, uh, savings account. Now, when we enter into a, an agreement with ODOT, we put that those funds into that savings account and they have the permission to kind of pick from, pick from it whenever they want pursuant to the contract. But they tend to lag quite a bit behind when they're finishing with these contracts. So, for instance, uh, Cassie Avenue, which I think was done maybe thirteen, around there. It took them a couple of years to, to withdraw those funds. So, um, you'll see that. That four and seventy-three thousand dollars, that's just going to kind of hang out there until those funds are expended. So, that's the main reason, that's the, well, expenditure for capital. And then, as Jackson said, uh, yeah, we have the, the street SCC, you can just see how big contracts offices. And what I think the highlight here, what, uh, city council goal is to kind of look at what our funding plan will be for Barclay Phase Two. And one, one number here I mentioned earlier about reserves, it's, you know, our balancing SDCs for streets will be about 1.2 million dollars. We need a lot more than that for Phase Two. Um, Phase Two is probably re-eating with us. And so, this is the fund that that would be mostly spent from. So, you know, really kind of as SDCs go explain, it's the impact fees that developers pay when they, you know, pay for building permits, the pain with the system development charges that goes towards building more capacity of the roads. And they have their infrastructure to accommodate that redevelopment. Um, so really we need to see a development to pay to this fund in order to support, uh, completing our alternate route, uh, Barclay Base Two. Um, of course, we'll be seeking grants and other things, uh, to help fund that. Um, even looking at financing as a possibility as well, we want to move that up the timeline. But we're willing to see some of the systems being collected that, that help fund those type of projects in our TSC.
Do you elaborate if, if Phase Two, for this?
Yeah, so Phase One is to, um, to a large, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's right. And then large to part, it is part. And so that's, uh, you know, straighten out the street. Uh, basically, in, in moving the speed limit to thirty miles an hour, this is so that semi-charts and other large haul vehicles stand easier there, easier, easy.
More easily.
More easily. Thank you. Talking too much, uh, navigating the alternate route back to the highway.
Um, I'd like to make a comment to our fellow councillors, if this is a project Barclay Phase Two that we want moved up, that's up to us, right? So let's think about that throughout this year and for goal setting next year.
Possession SDC, this is also one of those type of impact fees, which very widely. You're getting a drive-through business, which we don't really allow them as much anymore. Uh, but if you get a high-intensity generator, uh, commercial business, something that, uh, traffic cars do, they can have a high more so than you expect for a little chance of development. Okay, and then, uh, page seventy again, that's kind of a, a sample summary, summary of some of those projects we mentioned. So this kind of breaks those down, um, and it refers to whatever account they're, they're placed in. So it's kind of a full, in addition to that, we have that five-year forecast. So we have that for the water and sewer. All right, all right, Jackson. We're on page, uh, seventy-two. This is park SDCs. The big away.
And so again, uh, SDCs, new parks, new park development. Uh, I, I mentioned earlier, there's the, uh, Northwest Park Master Plan. Uh, you will see that, uh, grant for funds in other grants on line item six-six-five with the $1,000. And the primary goal, uh, next six years to, uh, complete that new project. When we have to move there, if we have, uh, early twenty-twenty-six.
Yes, we have that there and, and capital outlay. So we have, uh, the city's contribution, which is carrying over for, uh, SDC already put the wall port, so, uh, they have that, and I'm not sure what their estimated construction timeline is for some of their improvements.
I think it's kind of, I think, I did, I did. I think I, I also wrote this, like, but, you know, our timing on this was really once it break around, start just, um, definitely.
But, you know, to my earlier point about building a fun balance, um, that we're future contributors, that we talked about a group right now planning, you know, for the Northwest Master Park. Eventually, um, we'll have a master plan, hopefully will be based, probably talk about different funding options and opportunities. And a big part of that funding in our SDCs, which, um,
I would also add, pretty benefit, non-council members here that, uh, should a UGB expansion move forward? There, there is a plan, our plan, within that UGB area service to parts of the community and, and other activities, and those also would be reflected somewhere here down the line. Doesn't, uh, happen free, so, um, but it's been a point of discussion by the parts, by the board that link. What we need to build new parts, recently completed parts, uh, comprehensive long-range plan indicates that we do a lot of work within the city. And that would be within the expansion areas.
And we increase the capacity of, of per capita of what we want our future parks to reflect, correct?
Yeah, that, that's, but it gets incorporated through the actual, what the SDC is, and I don't, gee, perfect. The parts SDC, so it's increased to five acre acres per thousand. We're pretty efficient.
It's actually very bottomless nationally, and I'd be by that as for having to see the side doors. They're wanting special adapt, well, button it up, it does have an impact on a number of things. Funny, but, uh, from the perspective of what the National Park and Recreation Association, Urban Development should have for, for capital. This will bring us to the bottom level. That's our official.
Yeah, and this, history, I mean, we're surrounded by trails and casual horses and those type of recreational opportunities, etcetera, but they do, they draw back the sound. We're heavy on that side, right? You have a lot of opportunity for running, walking up or play, but playgrounds and other amenities that are more urbanized.
Our PDC fund?
Was that? I've never been more excited about this fund. Yeah, there's activity. That was right. It's on page, uh, seventy-four. Right, right? I mean, it's a little things. I probably should have.
Wait, you're going to set over this line at the budget for the next like seven years?
I know, it's, it's going to be a, a quick burn. And all the stuff on a couple of things, but like I said before, uh, with paid revenue items, um, the parking district receives about fifteen thousand dollars a year. Little bit in interest, so you know, you can see that fund balance here, uh, has been building over the years. And then, um, and then finally, we have, uh, down here in capital improvements, the, the contribution to that Adams Avenue Streets, Streetscape project, which we'll talk about a little bit more. And then we're going to relay to see because urban rural agency will be, uh, taking the lion's share of that project. But, um, but I see something, you know, worthwhile for the fund and its intent, um, to, to, to a project like that.
I have a question, um, for the, the comments comment about council balls. I saw that, uh, staff is recommending that this is a parking thing, not being the parking master plan. Not red. Um, in the coming year, is that something that we should be looking at for next year or? It's a mix.
Probably, I think, yeah. After, after, oh, I can't speak for you, but after Adams is done, I think we'll kind of see what that parking situation looks like.
We're going to get, um, parking up, you know, with the, since the day they days and, and that's the deep version and, yeah, the landscape, so, yeah, I think.
Yeah.
A couple of changes coming and then maybe after that, we'll have more information.
Yeah.
Hopefully, obviously more transit as well. So, nice transit, if, you know, positive may partly or be parking, but
Yeah. That's why you study, right? So.
You got to be data before.
Yeah. All right, so we'll move on to City Hall Debt Service Fund, and that is on page seven-six. So this, I don't think we can cover the, the line item detail of this, um, but again, it's pretty simple. I think I explained it before. So a couple of things, City Hall will actually be paid for in two years. I think I mentioned that before, which is, which is great. Then, you know, this fund will likely kind of go away. Um, and the way it works is, uh, the general fund, the water, sewer, and street fund all contribute money to the City Hall Debt Service Fund for it to satisfy its portion of debt service. So back when, um, you know, we refinanced, uh, in twenty sixteen, this was a separate loan, and then, uh, we refinanced all of these, you know, sewer uh, and the Sea Hall loan went together. And so, um, you know, it was, it looked at a little bit differently because it's kind of incorporated these other loans, but it still has its portion, uh, to pay. So, um, pretty simple structure. And, yeah, looking forward to paying this building off for a couple of years. It's great as well. There you go, City Hall Debt Service Fund. That's kind of the grand finale for, for the government funds.
Um, I think about this, but, oh, thank you, Willie. Um, it looks like, uh, lunch in the rise. It looks like this might be a good time to take a break. More, um, that we have around here. Um, so, um, it can, we can maybe, uh, I don't know, fourteen, twenty-minute break to and like grab a little lunch. Those, do what you gotta do and then, uh, eat while we work so that we can, uh, avoid, uh, meeting tomorrow, Jake. Is that, is that something fair for you?
Yeah, I think we're right on target. Yeah, we have water, sewer, we got, it's not an SDC fund, so. Heard your noise within five to six hours. Yeah, this is a message. No.
All right. So, well, plenty. Yeah. Um, we've got a few more funds, you know, to do here, and, uh, but we're all.
Hey, uh, next up is the Water Fund, uh, funding maintenance of our existing water system, River Network, these water to our customers. Uh, we're going to be clearing on the part, uh, requires this later, uh, working force, uh, constructing the improvements to, uh, one, and as well, three. Uh, again, implementing a lot of the mitigation plan of, 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 well, structures as well as implementing our water conservation, like, you say, water at City Hall and in the Atlantic Islands. Uh, some items, you may be seeing in contact services, uh, we can sub, generate load testing, uh, well generated um, and private improvements.
Yeah, so the things you can see that the, uh, the credit card fees are, are a little bit higher year over year. Um, and, you know, and that is largely due to a lot of people using credit cards for their, for their bill pay. And, um, not only through the online website, which I talked a little bit about during, uh, the finance presentation in the general fund. Um, but just for, you know, for some of the, for some of the role that, that we have, they kind of they have a more ship rent for our users. But, yeah, that's definitely coming at a cost. And again, it's just, you kind of see a lot more people pay, you know, via credit card than via online or for, for us. And then some of those other highlights, uh, that Jackson talked about. Really, uh, you have a little bit in, um, in contract services, like he said, and then, and then largely in that capital outlay. Line item nine ninety-four, so you have, uh, well, one improvements for, uh, to the tune of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And then we're going to continue with those, uh, well regenerators, again, like you said, uh, for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And those are actually through some, uh, the financial funds that the city received. So that'll be kind of the last, last ones for those, for those funds.
So is, is it time for us to consider, uh, surcharge on credit card? A lot of, a lot of places are doing that, you pay with the credit card.
Yeah.
It just, yeah, when I look at that change, uh, the credit card, uh, loss, here it is, you know, from eighteen thousand to probably eight thousand, over, for your spread, that's, those are dollars that are not available for us to do the work that we need to.
Agreed. So when we, when we started to, to transition people to, um, online bill pay, we wanted to make it a little bit more convenient for them. So we were at the time willing to absorb that, that transactional charge and that credit card fee. Um, but yes, uh, we've actually internally been talking about, uh, ruling that, the charge to customer. It was also in concert with, you know, knowing that we're increasing utility rates. Uh moving that to charge the customer, it was also in concert with, you know, knowing that we're increasing utility rates by four percent in water, water utilities, so. We didn't wanna, didn't wanna impact you know too much with that, but uh definitely on our end tractor, appreciate that comment.
I'm not, no, you know, originally. You know, when I pay the bill and I would use my checking account to pay the bill, it was. Um the city was setting, you know, this is.
Yeah.
Years ago, but let's say, okay, well, my bank is going to write a check, print it in the mail and send it, so then it was not free to get here on time, um.
Right.
When we change over to this new system, that that always her way that. One day come out of there, you know. You know, you can get.
Yeah, they they can still do that, yeah.
It's done, um in the same ten days, we'd be back like a whole.
No, I mean, some banks with bill pay will still have that issue, um just most because of the postal service more than anything, you know, someone will say, well, it's taken out of my bank ten days ago, I don't know why it's not there.
We said it was a poor word, funny experience.
Yeah, so we used to run into that, but that that is still an option for people to use.
Okay, that didn't necessarily get it. I just don't know why it comes on the back end, but why some. I think it's still okay, they're, you know, even I say and all of it, it's like, no, we have to.
Yeah, I think some different banks are doing differently as well.
So that can get to. This kind of goes right with credit card. Right. Right back to the credit card, same same thing with the campground.
Yes, we can give it, yeah.
Hey, honey, how was it this year?
Uh, yeah, that sounds about right, um but yeah, same same thing, you know, we're trying to. We're trying to make life a little little easier for campus as well to to run everything through a reservation system and that the reservation system comes with um, you know, financial impact, and so does the credit card processing, because like any, you know, student business. Will will do, they have to use, you have to use their credit card processing with their website, right? Um, so it's just definitely give and take there, um I leave for campground, you know, throughout the. Throughout the last, I would say, several eight years, we've been able to kind of increase, you know, fees to accomplish some of those things, um. But yeah, maybe it's worth the discussion, kind of pass those along as well. Or or maybe as a council, we want to discuss maybe what a policy might look like that's just across the board, you know, like maybe. You know, maybe we say we split it with them, you know, half and half, I don't know if that's even worthwhile to think about, but if you, I, you know, um. Whatever the fee is, half of it, we split it, and that way, we're not giving it all to them and we're not, it's not all on us, I don't know, I think as a council, we could talk about that, too. Yeah. Down the road, not today. Okay, oh, sorry.
Great, all right, move on to the next topic. Water and S T C.
Alright, now we're on page eighty two. And again, with S T Cs, this is on. Funding improvements for new uh water improvements. Primarily, uh again, continuing on with uh with the prior year, uh doing a deep analysis for the transmission main on Edge and Road and waiting for rest of our. Strong environmental protection. We already uh conservative with S T Cs, again, um. Those can fluctuate, sort of conservative opposed, um but we will see the contract contract and services is where the funding for the design of that rest of our transportation aid. And really, it's already that whole five or four year.
How with S T Cs, I know we've done it. Request by developer, turn the place to. In the first, you know, it had the deferred in S T Cs. Does that have to be reflected in the management somehow?
Um, no, it'll it'll be deferred, so you won't see. Um, you won't see those brought in until they're they're triggered to be due. Um, from an accounting standpoint, when we do our financial reports, it will likely be. Uh posted differently. So budgetary, uh for budgetary purposes, it'll be a little easier to track, knowing that that's there. Um but from the financial side, uh yeah, we'll have to work with the honors on on that, as to how to correctly reflect that. It's gonna be under revenues, definitely like a liability, so probably going as a liability um into the utility is uh is what I'm thinking, but. Yeah, but it's important to make sure that we're ahead of that, when we get that that number um figured out.
Um, page eighty five is your C I D for water, so this is spoken, the water fund and the water S T Cs. Again, we're, you know, looking at the reserve balance and, you know, the. Joe mentioned twelve percent rate increase and additional rate increases coming built into this budget is because we have, you know, fourteen million dollars worth of projects that we're doing over the next five years, and so we need to build up that fund balance and build up. The rate capacity to fund, you know, basically debt service, um it's got a loan, it's a thing that we need to give things like a six million dollar reservoir, so. What we're doing this year, this next fiscal fiscal year is. Um, the design very for the large project, but ten million dollars just for the reservoir and transfer supervisor to come, uh we're giving construction, um. You know, the following fiscal year, the years after that. Um, also, I'd like to see a snapshot of what it's like over the next five years, of course, things change, you know, depending on construction schedules and things like that, but. This gives you a pretty good look at what's to come and what we're building out for.
Yeah, it's a great point, actually, in the twenty seven twenty eight column there that you see, it also coincides with the kind of the larger rate increases for at least the water utility. If you remember, I said before, those those increases will taper off after that, so we're expecting kind of a first tranche of of financing to be, you know, within that period that kind of fall off after that.
So, way, uh it's the timing of the uh third bar in the transition line, is that it? That basically kind of locked it, made some of the nonsense and our ability to kind of get the financing for that, right, is there a way to speed that up, I think that's my question, or did it kind of? You're processing funding right now.
Yeah, no, I think that's that's accurate, um supplies. Who is will be able to do it, say twenty seven forty eight, six twenty seven? Do a little better. Yeah, yeah, I mean, some of it is, yeah, the deeper review is taking some time, right, environmental review, make sure that. You know, go through that process, but just designing engineering of these large projects, take time to the second for that, where again, chairs are all. Um. Uh and then, yeah, we, this this fiscal year will be finalized, basically, how we're defining those projects and evolving the festival, you'll see. Either alone, now we've had, you know, meetings of business organs and stuff, and how we call it together, uh the financial backlist. So we have three point one million dollars to fund out to S T Cs, as I could gain off to do a six million dollar. And there's really no reason to speed up one of them because they all need each other to get the water, so in that regard, they're, you know, all at the same time.
Yeah. We have enough water as it is right now, I mean, our timeframe, you know, we're, we actually have to put in for a new um. Water, right, uh to expand our capacity, but we really don't need that water for like, you know, twenty years or so, maybe a little bit now, but. Some of this doesn't coincide with grow, need to have that, we don't see additional capacity, um but I think you're just gonna make a difference in the the one.
Yeah, you know, as far as things are concerned, we're not serious, let's stay.
Sure, same same here, yeah.
But, hey, move on to the sewage fund.
Alright, that was on page eighty six. This is more alcohol downhill.
We do a mistake, so.
Yeah. That all gravity thing.
So we did implement uh new sewer rates uh four percent, as we said earlier, uh we repeated the design for West Side Pump Station, what else did that? Uh would be in construction uh in the next semester. And uh we also signed the rural street pump station and we'll hopefully um making construction on that not long after uh West Side Pump Station. Yeah, oh, oh, sorry, Jackson, those numbers are reflected in the cap outlay.
Yes, you've got those those larger numbers, like you said, in cap outlay and then in uh contract and services, which is line seven twenty six on highlight here, um you also see that um. Right there. Uh, the the twenty thousand dollars model for uh resiliency for the treatment plant area, and we're talking about that as well. Um. In addition to um big carrying public improvement finance, so we have some money earmarked there, uh to evaluate some of those options, um that we will, or you do some of these projects, so. Um, those are kind of the two two highlighted areas, again, same thing with the water fund, you know, evaluating those credit card fees, um. And then, you know, sewer is al- also one of those things where railway repairs, you know, as the system gets older. Um, I think, you know, I can't speak for you, but we're, you know, we're kind of seeing some of those, we've seen uh pump repairs and system repairers and so we're trying to. Stay ahead of that, but we've kind of seen that a little bit happen over the last, I don't know, couple of years.
Yeah, a a big reason we're working on the. Road, road shape pump station as well, it's the West Side Pump Station, and some we're done seeing there, uh so if we need to form work on one, we can rely on you. Uh and I didn't uh spoke earlier, uh West Side Pump Station uh is on S T C uh this one.
Need to count on this one?
Again, new sewer S T C rates, uh I think you're thinking of these projects.
Yeah, so just looking at, I'm at page ninety, just kind of looking at, um looking at the summary again, kind of conservatively budgeting the S T C charges, revenue. Um, kind of similar to last year's, as we're projecting uh for twenty five twenty six. And then, uh yeah, sorry, Jackson, you want to find one of the the projects there? Oh, uh just touching again on West Side Pump Station, of course, name. Uh, you know, we see that uh in cap outlay construction this year. Uh working on a design for the uh lazy Z phase one irrigation pivot and then uh into. Wetlands, ground systems. Yeah, so the the lazy Z contract services is is there. Uh, the three forty two, so you have the. The three thirty for lazy Z, then you have a little bit of money again for the uh the procurement of public financing. And then lastly, you have um the West Side Pump Station. Uh, two point one million dollars here, and that is a greater project that's going to be shared by not only sewer S T C fund, but also by urban civil agency, so you'll see that here. Sure, guys, from the urban civil agency, it's their contribution to that project, but um. But the sewer S T C fund will take most of that.
So, this, we did, they're designing back with issue. I I don't see if you want that in the expenses.
Uh that will be just in the design, so here there is the design, probably twenty six, twenty seven is what it would be, so, okay, thanks, yeah. Maybe let's not forget this off course, we'll put it there, okay? Right, we can go right into the vivid, one of this. At the parson.
So, I think here we're right at the end, are we at the end of this?
End of the presentations, though, let's see you guys, some great, if you have any other questions and.
So, um just to. Where we are here, um heading into the budget carrying in a few minutes or or one minute, depending on anyone trying to ask conversation, if I can have before we do that.
Yeah, I'll give you a little nod, um and the rest of staff, uh improvements you've made over the years are have really come together, and this is as easy as I've ever. Seen, so, thank you. Yeah.
Scenario question, um after the approval of the budget, if a property. Um, comes up for sale and the city is interested in purchasing it, how does that work, is that come out of reserves or?
Yeah, so, but, correct answer, sure, yeah, well, it depends on this, you know, where it's coming from, uh but typically, if. We would engage a council about property acquisition, uh and appraisal, prices, uh it's part of that process to, you know, execute purchase sale agreement, that would be a part of, there'll be a public meeting. And at that time, we'd create a budget resolution, um which would authorize, yes, to move money from contingency or appropriate, um and then there are enough. And about this to move into an appropriation category, um to acquire the property. So, yeah, it would be a, and that's a good example of things that why we have reserved for contingencies, because there's a lot of unknowns that happened over the next year and a half that. Or year, you know, fifteen months that, we just don't know what might happen or um it might come up and. There's a way by the law to make changes to the budget, depending on the size, you may have a little bit of a hearing, um uh and notice it and think about that, but. Fair as well.
Okay. Seems like that's the end of the three hearing discussion, so um. I guess, uh my work period, so um I'm going to open the public hearing first, pay revenue sharing. That great.
That's correct.
Here we are. And then.
Make the capital, yeah, you gotta do it. Thanks for waking me up.
Yeah, so, uh, this is a, the statute for the requirement, um for anybody in the public to comment on the treatment of state revenue carrying. So again, those are one of those things like revenue ladder, how about your, you know, uh figure out tax, those things, things like that. Uh, so they have an opportunity to comment on those things, the way we are spending them at this uh budget meeting, and that they do again, the competitive option in June, so. I would encourage anybody in the public, if they want to comment, please do so. We just don't have too much, but.
Um, was that it, we have anybody online?
Um, that's awake.
I see none.
So. There's not any, let's go on here. You ready? Alright, so. I guess this is where we're coming into uh motions. So I do want to make note, for anybody who might want to make an motion, if they're considering option A. That the um rate is actually two point six four one seven. So we're considering, you know. We had a number as per.
Any discussion?
Okay, oh. Okay. What would be right for? Would I? Okay, we have room, as we post comments right now, so um I'd like to energy a motion if there is one.
Madam Chair. I move the Budget Committee of the City of Simpsons approved taxes for the twenty twenty five twenty six fiscal year at the rate of two dot six four one seven for one thousand percent value. For the permanent rate tax living. Say.
Alright, so um it's just a regular vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion passed. Is it that? You don't have to.
Very good. I move. I move the Budget Committee, City of Simpsons approved the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty five slash twenty six. With the amount of thirty five million, two hundred and thirty eight. Thousand, six hundred and sixty. in the amount of thirty-five million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty one.
Perfect. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any need or extension? Motion passed. So, um, since we're, we're done, we do not need to, oh, okay, I guess we need to have this next, uh, motion then.
I move to cancel the Wednesday, May fourteen, twenty twenty-five, what did we mean?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any needs on that? All right. So, um, I'm going to adjourn. You. Yep.
Thank you, you are.